Good evening.
We're awesome.
Those people in attendance and those people Zooming, I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, Bellingham Planning Board meeting. We have a rather robust agenda this evening, so it may take a few things on order to speed up the process. Amy, we have a couple of continuations.
We do.
Can you bring us up to speed on those?
Yes, we could act on those probably within the next two minutes if that way we can move things. We have three oh six Maple Street is seeking the continuation and we can do that at the April eleventh meeting.
And the reason being?
We're, they're almost there with the peer review.
Okay, so we're making progress.
The next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll continue to April eleven.
Yes.
Second. Any discussion?
Dennis, I.
Right, Bill, I.
Bill.
Nick, I.
And going back for the purpose of attendance. Dennis, present.
Present.
Brian, present.
So we'll call the president.
Bill, the lines here.
Nick Mobilia, present.
Sidney Brok, chairman for three oh six Maple Street, that's separate. Actually, we need to take.
Yes, same thing, April eleventh.
Okay. So move. Second, second. Any further discussion? Call for the motion.
Dennis, I.
Right, I. Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Nick, I.
We also have under general business.
We have for fifty seven Mendon Street, they are seeking a continuation to April twenty fifth. We had neighborhood meeting, they're addressing the comments, so that would be April twenty fifth is what they're looking for.
So move. Is that Cranes?
Yes.
Okay. So right now on the agenda, we have two items for the eleventh and one from the twenty fifth, correct? You see a running tally, what we have?
We need a second on that motion.
I would entertain a second.
Second, Nick.
Any special?
Dennis, I.
Right, I. Bill, I.
Bill.
Nick, I.
I assume a lot of people could be here for an item under general business called citizens petition. Nick, would you like to read the citizen petition?
Absolutely. If you throw a vote to send this article back to the select board, it's to add the following definition to the provisions of section two forty dash thirty two. Warehouse, a building or facility with the primary function is to provide for the commercial storage and or distribution of a wide variety of merchandise goods and or other products. This shall include those facilities designed to store products in preparation for shipping and where those products are generally not made available for retail sale at the facility. Warehouses shall include those facilities for short or long term storage and in this manner shall also include fulfillment or last mile facilities for the short term storage and distribution of items made available through online or similar sales. For storage or parking of tractor trailers, trucks or trailers used in moving goods to or from warehouses is also included within this definition. The term warehouses shall not include retail self-storage facilities where members of the public can lease portions of a building for storage of household or personal goods or other items not intended for distribution or sale. To amend section two forty dash thirty one, the use regulation table by changing yes to no for warehouses in the industrial zone, thereby making warehouses a prohibited use in all zoning districts within the town of Bellingham.
Okay, thank you. This is just a motion to send back to the select board for action. Dennis, any comments?
Wait, we, no disrespect, we're not allowed to discuss that now, we're simply moving it to the select board, holding a public hearing on the twenty fifth of April.
All right. Okay, then, then when I were, who's holding the public?
We would have to, it has the procedural rules that we were advised by our council is it has to go to the select board to then have it come back to us for a public hearing. It will be advertised on the eleventh and the eighteenth for you to hear it in public open session with any members of the public that want to come. It's simply procedural for you to send it to then come back, which is our procedure.
Then what I would entertain is a motion to move the citizens petition back to the select board based on input from town council and consideration and for a public hearing on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Name of the planning board.
We'll second that, Nick.
So we can't have this, we can't have discussion. Okay.
We got a discussion.
On the motion.
On the motion. I'm sorry?
If it's, if it's necessary.
Okay.
Your point.
Talk about it.
I have nothing to add, can I?
Okay. I'll call for the room.
Dennis, I.
Right, I. Bill, I.
Bill.
Nick, I.
So that moves forward.
So I will write a letter tomorrow to Hillary to let her know that the board has voted to move it to the select board, who will then say to us that at this point we will hold our hearing and then I advertise it on the eleventh. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Next time on the agenda is going to be a continued public hearing on eighty five Mendon Street. Amy, where are we right now in regards to that?
We're making great progress. We have our consultant recite back from BSE. They did meet with conservation commission last night, I believe you made good strides with conservation commission.
Yes, they are ready to close essentially.
And we're moving forward, so we're going to provide you an update.
Okay. How are you, sir?
Good, thank you. Good evening to all. My name is Michael Drive, I'm senior project manager with Allen Engineering. Here once again on behalf of Paul and Julie Rogers and Alex Zakirsky, the architect is here. I got your name right tonight. So as, as Amy stated, we did receive peer review, but before we get into that, I just want to quickly kind of backtrack a little bit. We were last here on January eleventh, we got some input from the planning board. I want to talk about some of those items, but the reason that it's taken us a little bit more time to get back here is because the project went through a little bit of a value engineering exercise, as you may recall, there was a partial basement level. There was a pretty large outdoor patio in the back of the building. The basement has been reduced, uh, removed, completely removed, excuse me. The patio has been reduced, the overall occupancy, number of seats has been reduced. And in the latest narrative that I provided to you, I provided a table as to sort of the history of the vehicle, the initial submission versus what you have before you this evening. So.
What about the agreement from the house today?
The square footage went down over a thousand square feet. The patio went down about four hundred and twenty five square feet. Just touching on some of the highlights, the number of seats went from two sixteen to one fifty nine. And then, of course, the parking that, the parking demand goes down as well with small, with the lesser square footage and fewer seats. And we can get into that a little bit more later. So in terms of BSE group, we have reconciled, I believe, twenty one of twenty three comments. There are a couple of little things that I do want to discuss with the planning board this evening and I'm hoping we can actually work through these if it be the pleasure of the board to close this meeting this evening. So again, ninety five percent of the comments addressed, I'll direct your attention to these pages are not numbered, but comment number eight A and eight B.
Who's ready to pack it?
So halfway through the document?
It's all ten minutes?
Yes, yes. So we, when we responded to BSE group, we, we hope to enlighten them a bit on the situation here and let me just set the stage. We have a site that's a fill site essentially, the site was filled starting in the late sixties. It's filled to twenty two feet above the wetland elevation in the back. Below that fill is a very free draining sand material. So, and what I, if I, if I could, I just have a little handout to go along with this. Want me to pass it on?
That's great.
Actually, this is typographic I put together just to sort of help demonstrate. Thank you. You're welcome. Might be one more? I have an extra one, I can use another one. This is a cross section, it's essentially looking west, so to the left of the page is Mendon Street, to the right is the wetland. And again, this is a cross section, so you'll see the wetland down at elevation two forty. The site has been filled to two sixty two to two sixty five. So it's twenty two feet to almost twenty six feet above the elevation of the wetland. We dug four test pits and, well, we dug more than that, but I'm depicting four here. Those U shape symbols, test pits five, six, seven and nine are shown. We dug as far as we could dig, eleven and a half feet with a rubber tire backhoe and we didn't hit any groundwater, we didn't hit any modeling, any indication of groundwater whatsoever. So what we typically do in that case is we assume that deep excavation to be groundwater, even though in this case we know it's even deeper. But we, we take the conservative approach, we call that groundwater, we offset it two feet as required by DEP and that's where our infiltration chambers are set at the elevation. So I attempted to explain this to BSE group and they still seem to think that we should do additional groundwater study, frinter analysis, USGS analysis. I would just respectfully demonstrate here that in order for groundwater to be an issue on this site, if you look at the dimensions I put in the gray, from the wetland elevation to the bottom of the test pits, the groundwater would have to be thirteen feet higher than the wetlands in order to affect the design of this project. It's just, it's not possible, there's no groundwater, we're not even close to the groundwater. We also, not depicted on this sketch, but we also dug three test pits in the lower right corner for our septic system for the board of health. We're completing those plans now, we easily need, we easily demonstrate that we're nowhere near groundwater and that area is not infill, that's, that's the native material. We dug eleven feet there, we didn't hit groundwater, so I'm just, I'm not exactly sure, quite frankly, why BSE group is pushing this issue when it's very clearly not an issue. I don't know how else to say it, so we would respectfully request that we don't have to do any further work on groundwater. And just the last thing to say on that, DEP requires you to be two feet above groundwater. Again, we assume groundwater at the bottom of the trench, even though it's much lower than that, and we meet DEP's requirement, so again, I'm a little bit at a loss as to what the, the issue at hand is.
Okay.
So I hope I've explained that in a clear fashion. The only other outstanding comment is, I believe, on the last page, or second to last page, comment number twenty two B. They're suggesting that we revise our operation and maintenance plan to address fertilizers, pesticides and salt and sand. And I guess I'm just asking the, the board if that is, if there's some typical language you would like us to include. We certainly wouldn't want to be precluded from using some of those items listed on this, on the site, fertilizers, pesticides, if needed. I'm not even sure if they would be used in the future, but in my experience, we typically don't exclude those. I asked the conservation commission last night if they had any specific comments to add to the O N M, they did not, so again, those are the only outstanding items.
Okay.
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can just keep going to, walking through the revised plans or?
Could you please?
Sure, absolutely. So just to circle back to some of the comments that the board had for us last time, fencing, some of the visual aspects. You had requested that we add fencing along the western boundary, I'm just going to point to the plan here. We met with the neighbors in the field, we reviewed where the fencing would be, we added a six foot tall solid barrier fence along the entire west boundary. It's located a foot off of the property line inside of the subject property. So that's provides more than an adequate screen to the butter to the west. That's also supplemented with landscape plantings throughout the site, if you could go to the right there, so I'll point to here, oh, I can't, we didn't flip that page, sorry. You see the circles indicated on the plan along the front and along the west side, we didn't carry the plantings all the way to the back because it's a very narrow strip that would remain between the six foot fence and the paved area. So we provided some landscape material to further screen the parking area, but didn't carry that all the way back. On the back of the site, sorry, Alex, if you could just back up to the layup plan. The conservation commission, it's hard to see, but where the gray shading ends on the top of the page, there's a split rail fence that was added along the back and the commission wanted that there so snow wouldn't be pushed into the wetland. So we added that fencing. We made adjustments to the landscaping as a result of meeting with the neighbors. The neighbor to the immediate east at the corner of the triangle there, they were concerned that from their deck, they could see the back patio, so we added landscaping, we shrunk the patio, first of all. It's more so behind the building and as noted on the landscape plan, we added evergreen planting so that the view of the patio is blocked from their deck.
Where are those evergreens, can you point those out?
If you go to the, yeah, right, so if you look at the back patio just to the right, yep, see where it says five? They actually have question marks, but if you look in the table, they're there, those are emerald green arborvitae's and we placed those there specifically to block the view from the deck from the neighbor just to the east or the right of the page. And that patio was half the size that it was initially. When we left that meeting with the neighbors, everybody seemed happy, we agreed to address their concerns. So I'm happy to report that to the board this evening. I just want to touch on parking quickly if I could. When I submitted the initial plan with the narrative, we had put forth an argument, we asked, we're asking for a parking reduction, if you recall. We were asking for a reduction from one hundred and thirty eight spaces to ninety two spaces. That was about one third and we provided some, some data to suggest that that was more than enough based on surrounding zoning of the towns. Now that we've reduced the square footage and the number of the seats, the demand goes down. So now we have a demand of one hundred and sixteen parking spaces and we're providing ninety two, which represents a twenty percent reduction. So, you know, if you look at the numbers, that's, you know, hopefully much more palatable to the board. I do recall one of the board members asking for additional information in terms of backup. In the narrative I provided, I talk about all the surrounding towns, I compare your zoning and parking to the surrounding towns. By far, Bellingham is the highest requirement. I also asked our traffic engineer to use I T E data to generate the parking demand based on that. The Saturday night peak and the Friday night peak result in a demand of seventy two spaces and seventy five spaces respectfully. We're providing ninety two.
Okay.
So I think we've presented quite a bit of evidence to suggest that there's enough parking here for this use.
All right.
Just a couple of other quick things. The chief is here, we did get a sign off, we provided site plans to him, turning movements. We had a back and forth, he's happy with the plan. We did provide a lighting photometric in the latest submittal. It shows very low lighting levels, we don't have tall light poles here, we're trying to keep the lighting levels very low.
All down drafted?
Yes, all dark sky compliant and they're really just, they're pedestrian level lights actually, just to provide minimal safety lighting and that was done just to have respect to nearby residential rebutters. And then lastly, I'm not sure that we talked about this at the initial hearing, but we did request in our application some waivers relative to landscaping. That's primarily the number of shrubs that are required in the zoning bylaws. I'll just move through the table quickly, it's on the last page of my narrative. So street trees required, nine, we provided nine. Sideline trees required, in this case, four, we provided four. Parking area trees required, ten, we, we provided eight. And the only reason for that is there's really no viable space to put any more trees. I don't want to put them too close together where they all grow too bad, so we're only asking for a reduction of two trees. Now let's move over to the shrub category, this is where quite frankly, your bylaw requires a lot of plantings, a lot of plantings. The street shrubs, eighty seven shrubs are required, we're providing eleven, so we have all the street trees across the front and then we concentrated our shrubs at the entryway. Again, eighty seven shrubs, that, that adds up quickly, that's a very, very expensive landscape plan, just given what we're providing in terms of fencing and other landscaping, we feel that that's more than adequate here. Sideline shrubs, forty six would be required, we're providing eighteen. And finally, the parking area, we did, forty, forty one are required, we did provide the full forty one within the parking area. And we also have Alex put together some renderings, perspective views to show how the building and the landscaping interact and how that and we scrambled to put this together, Alex did, over the last couple of days. It is black and white, but we also provided color elevations of the building. So if you, there's a couple that are at street view, Alex, if you could go to those. There's one of them, so that's basically just to the east of the main entry.
That's the original sign for context?
Yeah, the original sign, it will remain, just be rebranded, that's at the main entry.
And the shrubs in front of patio.
They're actually, they'll be a little bit taller, there'll be actually arborvitae's there, so that's a somewhat of a small misrepresentation. The arborvitae's will be much taller. Again, we pulled this together very, very quickly.
Is the size of the back patio accurate to the building?
Yes, it is. And if you look at sheet C five of the plan set, if you have that handy, that gives you a nice view of the patio.
How high is that wall about?
Patio wall?
Yeah. It's probably be forty two to forty eight. We haven't decided yet, is it a wall or railing or? Yeah, it'll be some type of screen wall.
Okay. And we did plant around the entire patio. And I should also note that there was a pedestrian connection on the previous plan to the right of the patio. We made that connection on the other side, just so we could add more plantings there, as requested by the neighbor.
That's only there for your dress purposes?
Exactly, yeah, so yeah, what, they might have to bring furniture in and out, so we wanted some means to access the patio, but it's now from the west side.
That won't be entrance to the other venter margins, the entrance?
Exactly, yep. Access egress for patrons is through the two doors that you see on the plan that are indicated at the patio.
I believe the only other request from the board architecturally was the diagram and take off of the existing building, which we have produced here. So I went out, counted furniture and what I could find in the existing building, which was around a hundred and twenty two seats. Typically, they maybe had six staffs, so a hundred and twenty eight occupants in the existing Peace Bluebird. And then currently, we're at a hundred and fifty nine seats. On the interior, one forty eight, plus twenty four on the patio.
Peats didn't have an outdoor. And it's all, it's all new, right?
Correct.
And that's been shrunk from the first part?
Yes, correct. What's, what's your hours of operation? I do not know. Oh, you want to address that? Paul Rogers is here, your hours, intended hours?
We'll be closed on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday four to let me see.
Four to eleven.
Four to eleven.
We're not looking for a late night crowd, like?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because I know I live up by Norwegian Country called Navy and outdoor patio and they shut down at ten due to the fact you can hear them forever. They just travel and travel, so I didn't know if maybe would, you're going to be open to eleven thirty or twelve or whatever. But maybe you shut the deck down at eight, you know, earlier.
Yeah.
So that'll bring the?
No. Sit outside, like even on our patio in Bellingham, at PJs, nobody sits out there past ten o'clock.
Okay.
It's cold, it's buggy, mosquito thumb, even though I have a mosquito company company.
Okay.
They just do it like that.
It's, it's, okay.
Any other comments? Yes, I think so. And I can hear anyone from BSE here?
No.
Okay.
No.
I understand you have two concerns with BSE. I think we need to work our way through that and have it addressed by the, by a meeting in April. Because they're, they're our consultant and we listen to them, unfortunately, they're not here tonight.
Is there a way between now and April eleventh, our next meeting, they could work collaboratively with our consultant to come up with?
I would highlight.
A way that we could rectify those two issues and then?
You want to get this done quickly, but this is the first time we've seen a new set of plans. There's a concern with our, our peer review that we listen to. I'll let the other board members speak, but then I want to hear the other public.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with this water table here, this is, I have never seen that in my life and I've done a lot of holes in my life, so.
Okay.
I, I don't see, you should be able to work with, work with the peer review.
Okay, well, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the peer reviewer, I, I don't, we can try, but I, I tried to give you information that to the layperson, it's obvious that this is not an issue, I, I don't, I can't for the life of me understand why this is continuing to be an issue, but it would just be very unfortunate that we got to wait another two weeks over something that is, in my opinion, painfully obvious. But if, if that's what we need to do, I, I understand that you rely on your peer review.
Completely, yes, sir.
What, what, what do you think is their concern?
So let's go right back to the comment itself. So let me just, and I'll start by reading what he wrote. While we agree with the applicant's assertion that groundwater will likely not be an issue on this site, he goes on to say, to comply with all applicable local and state regulations, we still request they confirm groundwater conditions. We did comply, we dug to eleven and a half feet, we assumed that to be groundwater, we provided a two foot offset to the bottom of our stormwater. That, that's how you comply. On a site, say down the Cape where you don't have groundwater for twenty feet, that's what we do. That's standard engineering practice, you dig, if you don't find groundwater, you assume that to be groundwater and you hold a two foot offset. That's what we've done, it's that straightforward, so.
I think what we could do is take his, his perspective, our perspective, they can come with an email and we can get this moving that we don't have to wait a whole month, I, I think that's unreasonable, but the board can, you know, certainly, we don't need to hash it out tonight.
I totally don't want to wait a whole month.
No, no, I think it's.
I would like to move towards the, like you said, April, April eleventh agenda. Try to work out the issue, I want to hear from the public first. Here's my concern, there's no really concern. He addressed the issue of the trees and the shrubs. We're trying to put a lot of shrubs in a small area, is that where your failure is?
That's, that's part of it, and part of it, I think if, if you were to look at the landscaping budget, which I don't have in front of me, if we were to comply with your rights, it just would be an enormous cost.
Okay.
I, I don't think I've ever seen such requirements, quite frankly, for landscaping. We tried to give you all the, the bang for the buck, the mature trees and quite a few shrubs, but eighty, eighty seven shrubs along the street is just, it's a lot.
Okay. But again, the requirements we have, I, I think there's some room there.
We certainly appreciate that.
Something that I think perhaps I, I might have asked at the, the last time we met and if you could come back next meeting and, and just, we left the, Dennis picked up on the patio and the, it's a similar sized restaurant that's been there and operating there before, but now that we've moved it over and there's a walk-in cooler and there's going to be AC units on it, I just want to get a sense of the sound impact to the neighbors. On it, I just want to get a sense of the sound impact to the neighbors. And with the outdoor patio and all of that. Who goes to consider it?
Um, okay. Well, first of all, mechanical equipment is all rooftop, correct? Um, we surrounded, we we're gonna have, I think you said a, is it a forty-eight inch wall around the patio? And we provided significant landscaping. I mean, those are the tools that we have to mitigate sound. Um, so, I mean, short of doing a sound study, which I wouldn't.
I'm not asking for that, but I, what I was hoping you could provide us and others people have is. The those units on the top have a decibel. Um, from the manufacturer will tell you what those decibel outputs would be. So that is something we could think about. In terms of, in particular, where the walk-in cooler is and where the cooling system on the roof is gonna be. And then within, uh, within your plan or your operations manual, if you could. Pick a time that the patio would be, uh, closed for outdoor use, that would be helpful as well.
And I think we informally said ten o'clock. And they also, if I recall, going back to January, it was a while ago. I thought I asked the applicant. If the items on the roof, and I thought you said yes, could be baffled somehow?
Baffled by the parapet.
By the what?
Parapet wall, so the image on the screen.
That's what I thought you said, okay. Uh, that will reduce the sign, the noise.
Hundred percent.
Coming out of the roof.
Hundred percent.
And will conceal them visually.
Beyond what the manufacturer says. You put in essence baffles up there to reduce the sound for the neighbors.
Correct.
And potentially, if people's. In the patio.
Hundred percent.
To make it comfortable for them.
Going back to Brian's comment, so we haven't had mechanical engineering done, because that technically can't really be released until we get approval. So I am using architecturally placeholders. I have no idea size of unit, how many tons, what the decibels are. I'm just going off of typical restaurant. So, size-wise, that's where I set the parapet, based on a typical size unit. That's what you're looking at on the rooftop right now.
I'm not, I'm not looking for any, I just want to check the box. I want to make sure that we're not putting something, we're moving it, and it's gonna be loud and and and. For years to come, it's gonna be a problem. So I just want to make sure that we take some reasonable guess for that, that what we think that's gonna be, so we. We know, we looked at that, just best was good, and. And that we'll get from there.
You must have cut sheets from manufacturer to control that, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, to your point, we haven't. The the equipment hasn't even been selected, yeah. And then you have to look at the equipment in concert. So I I totally understand what you're saying, and you just said, use the word guess, and. I kind of want to focus on it more, because we will do our best, but to put an accurate, you know, decibel level on this.
I don't, I I don't want a sound study, and I just want, uh, I want someone. That's smarter than me to take a look and say, we're not gonna create a nuisance. So just, if you can, just look at that issue and just come back to us and say, we looked at it, we don't think it's gonna be a problem. So that we just check the box.
We'll do it.
So the outdoor patio being a new feature here, um. I guess I'd like to see a little bit more about. What the crowd out the back is gonna see. I know you added the arborvitae's on that one spot, but that didn't look like. It was covering the the area, and I guess maybe we can go through briefly about. The neighbor, that that would cover one neighbor, but what what about the other neighbors up the back? Where, I mean, I I just don't want. People on their back porches.
Sure, that's legitimate.
Having a blanket their backyard with you having your facility, you know, you're adding. You're adding twenty-four seats back there, which weren't in my original seating, I think you said a hundred and twenty-eight, now you're adding.
No, we reduced it.
Reduced it, yes, from the.
From the pre, from the initials.
From the previous owner.
No, no, not, not.
That's the number I was going. Previous owner was one twenty-eight, now you're going to one fifty-nine, plus another. You know, twenty-four, those are outside. I I just don't want to create a problem with the back patio area.
So the last time we sat in front of you, we had sixty-three seats on the patio.
Yeah, I remember that, and I like you coming down.
Yeah, absolutely. So now we're at twenty-four.
Um, sixteen? Six times four?
Yes.
Okay. So the neighbors. I mean, it doesn't show where their houses are on that.
Right. I can, um.
I think I can shed a little light on that for you.
Is there, um, to the upper right-hand corner, there, there's a fence line that goes down that line?
There's a six-foot fence that exists on this border.
Is that on your property, or is it?
On the neighbor's property.
It's the neighbor's fence.
Yep, yep, and we looked at that in the field with the neighbors that day. Um, on this side. Again, there's a six-foot high fence the entire way. We added that to the plans.
That's true.
In the back, yes, that's brand new. In the back, it's all wooded. There's, there are houses out to the neighboring street, they're literally a hundred and sixty feet away from the property. They do have some lawn areas in the back, but these houses aren't close to the property line like this one you see. They're way back here. So there's a long distance between these houses and that, this area of the site. And there's a strip of vegetation that will remain there as well. We're taking the big pines out that you've probably noticed on site. But there's other understory vegetation, there's partial berm that's gonna stay there when I'm touching that. So I I I hope that addresses your comment.
I don't even know if you'd see him from your second door bedroom, you know, from being out there, so this is.
That that would be nice to hear that you couldn't. Seriously.
Yeah, of course. I mean, we can't guarantee that, especially in the winter months when the deciduous trees drop their leaves, but. You know, again, late.
During the winter, I'm not, no one's gonna be out there in the winter, I'm imagining.
That's a good point.
It's, so I'm not worried about that, it's just. You know, nice summer night, sun's up till what time? Nine, nine-thirty? Um, and you're trying to cut down the the numbers of trees and shrubs and that type of thing, so to me, that doesn't really. Maybe we, maybe we can take another look at that for next time and see if we can get back to those numbers that are required. And maybe try to sh- to screen some more.
Can I, can I, can I just address that? As as far as like the the patio goes, the concept of what we're going for is fine dining. We're not gonna have music playing out there. We're not gonna have any type of.
No music at all?
Music out there. We're not gonna have speakers out there. And the clientele that we hope to attract to the location. Is gonna be a mature. You know, I mean, you're not gonna have.
Okay.
You know, twenty-one-year-olds out there partying up, it's like that, we have, you know, a a upscale clientele that's gonna come in for a. Nice meal, a nice glass of wine, sit outside, enjoy the outdoors. And not be causing ruckus in the neighborhood, so to speak, compared to what we have in some of, you know, like, as we have in Bellingham or PJ's. So, I mean, I think that we're not gonna have music out there, we're not gonna have any type of bands or any type of live music.
Okay.
So I think that will.
That that alleviates a lot of, a lot of my concerns.
Right, I mean.
Is that something that, and and maybe your consultants, if that's, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, but if that's something you guys are willing to condition, no speakers, no live bands?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's, I, a fine dining area is awesome, it attracts.
Right, I mean, yeah, we're trying to attract an upscale clientele that has a mature attitude, that's not looking to cause a scene or ruckus or anything with that thing. Come in, have a nice meal outside on a nice summer night, enjoy the outdoors. You know, and nice conversation with whoever they're with, whether it's four people, five people, six people. We're not looking to, you know. Disturb anybody's summer activities during the night.
That that's great to hear. If if that could be something that gets maybe conditioned.
Oh, absolutely.
If if you guys are open to condition on that, that alleviates a lot.
Oh, that, that, absolutely.
I would like to hear what the neighbors.
Kind of clientele we want to attract.
I would love that to, to go forward like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then, hear from the neighbors, but I'm for that.
I mean, any, any type of, whether we decide to do, any type of live. Music or anything, it's gonna be ins- within, with, inside the restaurant, not outside. Whether it's, you know, on a Saturday night, or which we haven't even discussed, but. That's the type of clientele we're trying to attract, and is is a upscale, mature, I mean, no, no disrespect, but upscale, upscale. Mature crowd that's gonna, you know, enjoy the the meal, the the outdoors, and that type of stuff.
That's great to hear. I'm all for that, but that's great.
Yeah, we have no problem putting that in there, I mean, that's.
Okay, great, um, maybe, anyway, we can look for some language, Nick. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys meeting with the neighbors. There's, there's a younger couple that I don't see here tonight. They had mentioned. Maybe an existing tree or branches were falling.
Yes.
Are in their pool. Has that been addressed?
So along this edge right here, there are eighty-foot tall pine trees, they're softwood, so that when the wind blows, the the. Branches are falling in their pool, on their patio, all those tall trees are being removed. They are a hazard. Um, so those, I I want to say there's maybe eight or ten of them along that property line, they're all being removed. And we we indicated that in the field. I think at one point, they had asked if we were gonna come on their property and pick up the branches, and that was something, as it will know, I mean. When a branch falls on your property, you need to pick it up, um, but the trees will be removed as part of the project.
And they understand that?
I believe so, yeah.
To that point, Nick, if I recall. That was discussed at the last meeting, very briefly. And she was happy. That they would take the trees down as opposed to him. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, the trees are on our site, so we have.
But he had some concern, he wanted to pick it down. Because of what was falling into his pool. And on his property. Any, any other comments? I want to read the several few comments.
I got back one question, one last question. The, um, the test pits, were they witnessed by the panel?
They were, so the test pits for the board of health, the three test pits for the septic system have to be witnessed. Those were. The drains test pits.
The drains pits were not.
No, because they're not required to be.
Okay.
Am I going to get in public?
Sorry.
Are you in the public?
We did have a meeting with the neighbors, like we did Scott's last time with Mike.
Yep.
And we walked the property, and everybody asked questions, and, and everybody seemed satisfied with what he was saying. So that's okay.
Yep.
And I I have the easement agreement today that our lawyer dropped off this afternoon. And my sister and I signed it, and he notarized it, but now Paul has to sign it and have it notarized.
Okay.
And have his lawyer record it before the project starts.
That's fun. That's our, our mainly work right now, but thank you. Thank you very much.
You own the property on the, on the right-hand side of the drawing, is that correct?
Not, it's the west.
Okay. Are you happy with the landscaping down there that that's added on the plans?
They're gonna do something there, right?
The fence.
Yeah.
We talked in the field about the fence.
Better than a retaining wall.
Yeah, okay, so you're happy with that?
Yeah.
So the the easement he's referring to, you see there's a few grade lines that go beyond the bold property line. That's the easement. We're gonna just do a little bit of very minor site work there, graded and seeded, but we needed an easement. From Bill to do that, so that's the agreement he's referring to.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Oh, um.
Hi, Anne Otobashen.
Hi.
I'm just here in support of Paul and Julie, and I think that one of the things we've seen, um, I know I, as the former town clerk, watching them as they opened. PJ's, that they're very, very good at crossing their Ts and dotting their Is, so. I would imagine this project will be done very, very carefully and to the board's liking. Um, so I I hope, though, that we can move it along and that they're not going to be. You know, sitting for time and time again. I understand you're at a process, but. It would be nice to see this come to a resolution so they can. Move on and let us all start creating new memories as we all did at Pete's. Now we can. Create new memories at Lucille's, which will be really nice. We're all looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Whatever's been suggested.
Uh, yes, sir.
I might, wait, I might have extension, and, and, and bash a little butter. I have no, as the neighbor there, I think the sound is a non-issue. A non-issue, it's no different than outdoor patio with. Upper-scale people hanging out outside. No worse than having your neighbor, having fifty kids hanging out over there, having a party, so I think it's a non-issue.
Okay.
And I would like to see it, it move on for them.
Okay.
I don't want to see that sound be a a concern.
I'm not requesting a sound study.
Okay.
You know, the part of the delay here was that they re-engineered the project. We we, in essence, it was not delayed because of, you you. That was delayed, it was re-engineering the project.
Yes.
To getting that period removed.
Exactly, yeah.
We've not slowed this down. Okay, we 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 have worked with the applicant, the applicant has worked with the neighbors. And we're trying to process through this as quickly as we can. Taking into consideration comments made by our peer reviewer. And what this board has been educated over the time we've been on the board. Our goal is twofold, is to look out for the budding neighbors. And also to deal with the rest of the applicant in a timely manner. So I I believe we've done that. I appreciate the comments from the audience. But we just have, I think, one or two issues we need to work.
What I was gonna recommend, and the board might not agree with this, but I I do feel like we do have. The butters who have been able to express that they really have no issues with this. Um, I personally feel like the applicant has come forth with some pretty major revisions to the parking. We have the lighting, we have rendering. There's really that one outstanding issue, which I think between now and our meeting in April eleventh, we can get that resolved. It's a minor one that we can put within a condition anyway, one way or the other. Um, I would suggest the board possibly look at having a decision be drafted. For maybe April eleventh, looking at the waivers. And and then possibly, you know, see where we're at. If you're not comfortable with that, that's fine, but. I don't know if we need a whole forty minutes at our next meeting. When the the issues are relatively minor, unless you see differently.
I'm pretty close to where you are. Um. You feel comfortable with in regards to the, um, reduction in plating? That they would address your concerns?
Yeah, I'm with the neighbors. Being in support, um, and the conditioning that we talked about with the speakers, and the visits out share, and. Features, we feel a lot better. The stormwater stuff, I think we still need air.
I I I agree, we can, we can work that out between.
We can work it in between.
The town, the peer reviewer, and the applicant. To be able to, you know, some satisfaction.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I don't, I can't imagine what they're seeing in this, but I don't, I think they can work this out pretty simply, that's their issue.
Okay.
I agree, I think probably Rob could render a decision pretty quickly.
Okay. Um, one last question, can you go back to your renderings? It it seems to be the, um. We hear a lot in town about what buildings are gonna look like. Can you tell us what your, what ideas you have from college, so you can get some ideas of what it will look like real life?
Alex also has elevation color, elevations. And those were actually included in the, um, with the plans.
Yeah, I know, I know that came up late.
Yeah. And we did the best we could.
I I understand.
These colors have not changed since our last meeting.
Okay.
Um, so we have a stone base that's most likely going to be gray, um, or some shade of gray. Uh, white building. Red doors, black metal, uh, window frames.
Okay.
So, sort of, I think they're calling it modern farm style.
Okay.
The white, gray, and black, with some red accents, which ties to the logo.
Okay.
Yep, so this is the back. Um, the walk-in will be silver, every walk-in, and asphalt roof.
Okay.
Yep.
And the composition of the patio?
And the what?
Composition of the patio.
Well, I guess that's probably the only outlier right now, is what we're gonna screen that patio wall with. My preference would be a natural wood material to match the heavy timber entrance.
Okay.
Um, this is actually not depicted as a natural wood, but we do have a heavy timber entry. Um, so I can update those couple, I can update those couple colors.
Okay.
Say that, say it again.
It'll be a farmhouse look.
Yep.
If you could, um. Have that enhanced in color first at the next meetings.
You mean the, these, so these are colored?
These are, these are colored.
Okay, just so, let's kind of mute it, okay.
There's no flashy colors, that's why you're asking that.
Gray, gray asphalt?
Um. Yes, it it won't be like a tan or anything like that.
It's not a dark either, though.
Uh.
Black asphalt.
No, uh, in terms of heat cane, I mean, we do have a black, um, burnt siding at the entrance.
Yeah.
Um, but it'll, it'll look like every house next to it in terms of an asphalt roof.
Okay.
My opinion, it looks nice. I was expecting maybe. In my opinion, it looks nice, I was expecting maybe, I was expecting more windows. Um, could get you, keep me with the thought, like, there's a lot of windows there, but, but I was expecting a little bit more windows, but I'm not just kind of curious why, I mean, you're Providence, but I'm just kind of curious what, uh, why, why so few, so few windows in a nice building like that?
Windows are primarily dictated by the front of house, so back of house, kitchen, um, we have some high windows, one in each bathroom, one in the office, and at the rear entry. So don't, right, everything else is back of house, front of house, um, we have large windows at each banquet. Table on the front. Um, we have built-in millwork, a wine cellar, and a private dining area here. So this is all millwork on this edge, so basically screened so you're not looking at the parking lot. Um, and then we have large windows on the back.
Interesting, okay. You're just to clarify for the audience.
I, 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 I think it was, I think what we're trying to do is create the create the essence of you're in an upscale steakhouse in Boston, we're all looking at one forty.
Yeah, okay.
Not that one forty's not bad, but.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious.
Try to keep that theme when you're inside, that you don't know you're in Bellin, maybe you think you're in Boston or in Providence or something.
You mentioned the wine cellar, that's on the first floor, it's a storage area, it's not, there's no basement.
Correct. Basement.
Just the people are confused. What I would, excuse me, entertain is a motion to draft two decisions, a favorable and a non-favorable for presentation at the, um, April eleventh meeting, pending, uh, discussions between the town, the peer review, and the applicant in regards to, um, specific items, um, in the BSC route dropped off with the March twenty-first, outlining, uh, items eight A and, uh, eight B. I wanted to entertain the motion.
Continue the hearing, Phil?
April eleventh.
Right, okay.
I'm wondering, is it necessary to necessarily draft a denial?
I, I think we just saw, I, I'd like to have a just draft a law, that's. If you don't want to, you don't have to, I.
I don't think, it's just extra work.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Alright, so you imagine your motion?
I have my motion to do draft a favorable decision.
I'm over.
Okay. Gave it a special.
Yeah, and just don't wanna cut off the legs of our peer review, so we expect you to work with them, but I'm all for this.
I think that, that can be outlined.
Yeah, just, just work, please work with them.
I think if I show them the graphic that I gave you forward, I think we'll be okay.
We also have an extended person.
And then we have some conditions.
We've had conditions.
That will be put on there, that we discuss tonight.
Yeah.
With regards to the ten o'clock, hotel, seating on the patio, and there'll be no, uh, outdoor, um, beds.
Right.
Noise, we can get the proper.
Speakers.
Being a proper preparation of that. And certainly limit outdoor to simply done.
Right, okay.
Um, now, there, there could be, and I, I'm, do you plan to, uh, I know you're on both sides of the room here. Do you have a plan to have any outdoor heaters out there to extend this season a little bit?
Uh, we have a name to discuss it.
Okay, that's fine, that's fair. But I think if we can cap that off at ten o'clock.
Yep.
And cap the noise off, that's fine.
Okay.
And that can be, if they choose to do something out there to extend the hours, I think that's fine. Any other questions?
It's really nice to hear how excited people are about this.
Thank you.
And I wanna thank you for making the changes.
Let's go.
Yeah, I, I know that slowed things down, and what I, I, I think we've made our good progress today.
What's your target as far as getting up and running on this?
Um, the team is very anxious to break ground, so we're, we're very anxious to get permits, the first step obviously is demolition. Um, so, uh, that actually may happen in the near future.
They want us to open it in the fall.
Yeah, so that, that's a separate permit, but, you know, that's obviously the first step that has to happen so to make way for the project, so.
I think they would, technically we have a motion on the floor.
Sorry. Seconded.
Yes.
Vote.
Vote.
Oh, yeah, from sending off the vote.
Yes, I.
Right, uh.
Go on.
Go on.
Yeah, go on.
Our motion passes in the office. Uh, lady and gentleman, the applicants, thank you very much. Um, people in public, thank you very much for coming, and I encourage you, if you want, if you want to stick around. Really, thank you. Thanks. A long history, get a good run. Bring your gold glasses. I don't know, let's pass it to the house. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Amy, can you bring us up to speed on, uh, North of Blackstone Street?
Uh, they've made significant progress also, um, been back and forth with the peer review comments, and I think that they've made significant changes to the plan, and I think you're gonna be happy with what you see.
Okay. What's all yours, sir?
Chairman, Director Brian Falk, Marika O'Connell, here on behalf of the applicant.
There's no relationship between, uh, myself and that offer, although we should, long run experience. My last statement. How I got the plans.
Oh, you wanted to share?
Getting the plans fired up, we've got them on easel here, we're just gonna get them up on the screen, uh, for everyone to easily see. Uh, with me, um, from, uh, here in Holland is, um, Amanda Caleri and Michael Hassett. Uh, so as Amy had mentioned, um, we have gone through peer review, we've had, um, a lot of back and forth, just to bring you up to date. We were last actually before you with plans in October. Um, we submitted revised plans in November following, uh, feedback from the board and from neighbors. Uh, most significantly, we dropped the number of buildings from six to five, um, which means we have a total of fifteen units, it's fifteen two-bedroom townhome units around the short cul-de-sac. Um, so as was the case before, and is still the case, um, the project development area is limited to a portion of the existing field, that's the light green that you see on the, on the um, concept plan. Um, that's the existing field area that's there, the dark green is the existing wooded area, that all stays the same, so we're essentially building in the field, portion of the field. All the woods stay the same, and what you're seeing there in the, in the dark colors is about half of the site, is a significant portion to the rear, um, that is part of this, uh, project site that's remaining the same. Um, essentially, we've got twenty acres, fifteen of them are going to be in a conservation restriction. And that's all the wooded area, that will be a permanent CR, permanent woods, permanent screening from our neighbors, we're building in the, in the field area, which is about twenty-five percent of the overall site, so our, our impact on the property is um, quite a bit less than we originally proposed and, and quite small overall, so twenty-eight per, um, parcel. Um, so our, you know, these plan changes, reducing one of the buildings was responsive to questions and comments from neighbors and from the board, wanting to see a different layout, wanting to see less density, um, and that's what we've done here. Uh, we still have the visitor parking towards the front of our driveway, we widened that driveway a bit, um, consistently with requests from the fire department. Um, we have to the right of the driveway, oh, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Um, on the right side of the driveway coming in, we have a pull-off area where, um, residents can get their mail and some space for cars to park, so away from the road.
I'll be good.
Yep. And then, um, we've got screening along Blackstone Street, so we've got the, the development area pushed back quite a bit, quite a bit further from what the, um, existing setback is for that zoning district, um, you know, almost triple what the, what the setback would be, and screening along Blackstone Street, um, so we've pushed things as far from our neighbors on all sides as, as we possibly can. Driveway is positioned to minimize or really avoid, um, any headlight glare to, um, the two residential neighbors that are across the street. Um, so we submitted, um, these revised plans back in November. Uh, we then started peer review with the board's new firm environmental partners. Um, our engineers from GNH, um, and also our traffic consultants from Vaness and Environmental Partners have had um, significant back and forth, letters back and forth, some phone calls going over things. Um, we're, we're very happy to report that we have very few issues at this point that are between our, our two, um, uh, engineering sides. Um, so we have, we've got final letters from environmental partners that were submitted earlier this month. Um, one with respect to civil and zoning, and one with respect to traffic. Um, a common final comment from EP on most of the items was that, um, the item had been closed out. Um, there are a few issues, uh, or a few instances where EP is recommending that um, some item be shown on the site plans, and, and we're happy to do that in, in those places. Um, so for the most part, our comments are either closed out, or just please show that on the plan.
Okay.
Um, what I'd like to do is just go through you, there are, are just a few items where essentially, you know, our, our two, um, engineering teams have gone back and forth, and the final comment from EP was to put it in the board's score, to say, you've heard from us, we've had it back and forth, and now we think it's for the board to make a decision whether this, um, um, whether you go with what EP is recommending, or, um, what, um, we have proposed as, as something different, so. Um, I mean, from our perspective, there's not a whole lot more back and forth between the peer reviewer and our side that's necessary, it's really more just a few items that are for the board to decide at this point, so. I was just gonna walk you through some of those, but, um, broadly, things that I had. Oh, sure.
This is a document dated February twentieth?
No, this is, um, so we have, um.
It's the, uh, March nineteenth letter from our environmental partners.
Right, March nineteenth is the final, uh, peer review letter, um, regarding zoning and civil. And then there's another one on March twenty-first, um, with respect to traffic.
Okay.
I'll go get it, you can, you can.
Okay, sure. Um, so I'm not gonna address the, the, the traffic letter because essentially all those items were listed as closed out, or just show the improvement on the plan, so we're good with that, um, we're, we're comfortable showing those improvements on the plans, either as a condition of approval, or something that you wanna see quick updates in the site plans before you issue a decision, you know, it's the board's pleasure. So on, on the zoning and civil, uh, the letter dated March nineteenth, which I guess Amy is getting, um, I'll just go through a couple of them. Um, item one in that letter, um, it notes the fact that our, our landscape plans aren't stamped by a landscape architect, that's something that's in the board's rules and regulation. Um, GNH has a site designer with decades of landscape design experience, um, doesn't have the stamp, but her work's been before this board on other projects, and the board has granted that waiver, so receiving that waiver, it's just not having, uh, not having a stamp on, on those landscape plans. Um, item five in the, uh, March nineteenth letter is looking, um, essentially asking, does the board think a noise and air quality analysis is required here? Um, from our position, at this point, it's a relatively small residential project, I don't know that that would assist the board much in its decision-making, but EP put that in your board to decide, you know, we, we don't think it's necessary. Item six was a request that we show bicycle parking on the plans. Um, remember, we've got fifteen two-bedroom townhomes, each one has its own driveway, and each one has its own two-car garage. So from our perspective, bike, bicycle parking just really isn't necessary, it's probably not gonna be used, uh, really at all. Uh, that's more appropriate for a multifamily where folks don't have their own storage for bicycles, so that's why we, um, suggested that we don't need that. Um, looking ahead, items twenty-one and twenty-two, we're looking for a waiver from the requirement that we provide a draft, um, swift and phased construction plans. Um, we designed the site to comply with stormwater bylaws and, and regulations, and we think, now, we know we have to provide those pre-construction, obviously, and we think it would be, uh, make more sense for that to be a condition of approval that we provide a pre-construction rather than, rather than now. Um, item twenty-four was looking for, uh, one accessible parking space in our visitor lot. Um, again, we've got driveways that will accommodate at least two cars on each, uh, each, uh, individual unit plus a two-car garage. Our thought is if anyone needed accessible parking that was a visitor, they probably would park in the driveway, and it's not necessary for the visitor parking area, which is es- essentially overflow parking from our perspective. Um, item twenty-six is looking for confirmation that we'll be able to, um, do eligible connections to the grid. Um, to us, that could be a condition of approval, it sort of is gonna take care of itself. If we can't connect to the grid, we're not gonna be able to build the project, so having the, um, having the go-ahead letter from the utility right now, I don't know, is, is really necessary, it could be a condition of approval, but uh, it'll, it'll take care of itself from our perspective. Um, item twenty-seven suggests that we do a looped water main, uh, but it defers to the town's DPW if, if a dead end is, is permissible here. Um, from our perspective, we did a pressure test back in the summer, um, which indicated that there's plenty of pressure and that, uh, that a dead-end system will work, the loop, i- isn't necessary.
Okay, that's on our area, chief, do you wanna?
And we, I know the initial plan was we wanted a loop system, and we're gonna stand by a loop system, and we went on well for some of that.
Understood, and again, that could be a condition of approval, um, it, it's an equal, so one or the other. Um, and so I, I don't know that, um, you know, further review is necessary, but that's from our perspective. Um, items twenty-nine through thirty-three, then also on forty-three is asking for additional information about the proposed open space and recreation areas and landscaping. Um, we think that's pretty clearly shown in the plans, I mean, the, the open space and recreation area, open spaces is woods, existing woods that are gonna be subject to a conservation restriction, uh, we think that's pretty clear. And the recreation areas are, you know, the lawn areas that aren't part of the detention, uh, basins that will be available for our residents to use. Um, landscaping, I think we've got that pretty well, um, depicted on the site plan, so. Um, I mean, more information, I don't know that there's a whole lot more that we can provide, but, you know, we, we understand. EP's has requested that, but we think we've, we've provided it. Um, so those are the ones that I'm comfortable going over, again, they're ones that the EP put back in your court.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the last item that I wanna turn to, um, uh, Mike Hassett to discuss is a little bit more detailed, and it essentially has to do with the methodologies that we use versus the ones that EP would, would have used with respect to the stormwater, stormwater design. Um, again, it's one that I don't know that there's, we need to have a much more back and forth, that's EP has essentially put it in your court. I wanna turn to Mike to, um, to just describe what, what the different methodologies were, where we're coming from.
Sure, uh, so the comment he was referencing is comment eight.
Yeah, bear in mind, sir, we're not. We're working a little bit late.
Yes, uh, so this is comment eighty, um, and I'll read through the whole comment, history, you know, the discussion back and forth between us and environmental partners.
It's pretty short, just.
Yeah, so it, it starts, you know, pond one E, the existing depression, uh, is modeled with an infiltration rate of two point four one inches per hour. Um, they, based on the test pit logs, they should be modeled with infiltration rate of eight point two seven inches per hour corresponding to sand. Um, and so we initially responded to that with a, um, a comment response, and so we responded, the NRCS map soil types, um, where there's an depression indicates a soil which includes both sand and lomi sand, both test pits within and adjacent to the existing depression identify the parent material as sand. The logged top and sub soils are sandy loam ranging from twenty-four inches to thirty-six inches in thickness with thick grass pasture ground cover, due to the presence of this restrictive layer above the rapidly infiltrating sand, the rawls rate for lomi sand of two point four one inches per hour was chosen as a conservative estimate uh, of the infiltrative capacity of the existing soil profile rather than one point four two inches, which is appropriate for sandy loam. Um, and then in the proposed pond condition, the restricted top and sub, uh, soil layers will be removed to expose the sand sea layer beneath um, in a four-inch loam sand mix, uh, place to facilitate the rapid recharge of the stormwater. Uh, this configuration allows for the infiltration directly to the sand layer and justifies the use of the sand's recharge rate. Um, and they responded, uh, March sixth, and, um, they, uh, their response was, item remains open, as discussed during our coordination call with the applicant, it was near on February second. Uh, we recommend the same infiltration rate for both the pre-development and post-development hydrocan analysis. Since the parent material sea layer is sand, we recommend using that infiltration rate percent. Um, and then they, they also have a comment about, um, which particular grass species and densities are required, we don't object to that portion of the ton, we're happy to make that revision. Which particular grass species and densities are required, we don't look up to that portion of the document, we're happy to make that revision. Um, and so the, the nature of the, the dispute, um, and let me see if I can find, yeah, there we go.
As much as engineers can really fiercely dispute stormwater calculations, I'm just.
No, he's not.
Okay.
We could mention the rawls rate.
Okay, did I say something, just real quick? Um, I appreciate you, you raising this point, but our, um, ge- generically. We would prefer to or rely on our technical peer review to, to advise us on what to do. We are lucky to have now, um, our new town planner is a, an engineer and I'm sure he can weigh in on this. And could educate us or make the decision or help us make the decision, so. I'm, I don't wanna, you're gonna say a lot of stuff we don't necessarily.
Sure, it's gonna be above our heads.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll summarize the rest of it very briefly then, just so you have an understanding of, of nature, so essentially. They want, they're, we feel they're making a very concern, a very, very conservative, uh, choice. Um, by saying just apply the same things to both conditions. And we feel that the conditions are different enough to warrant a, a slower recharge rate in the existing condition. Given that there's a three, two to three-foot thick layer of restricted material on top of the sand. And they're saying, well, just, you know, use it as the recharge rate into the sand. Um, whereas when the basin is constructed, we're gonna strip all that out and just have a small orange layer of loam on top for grass to establish itself. And, and so that's why we, we feel that the recharge rates are, are different and. Um, the impacts of the stormwater design, um, can be significant because. Um, it's going to essentially reduce how much runoff is estimated to leave the site during the pre-development condition and as you know, we have to meet that for the proposed. Um, and so that results in a twenty-five years storm, you know, approximately six and a half inches of rain. Um, modeling it the way that they're asking for, you know, the, the ten, fifteen acres of watershed that comes onto the site. It's gonna result in zero water leaving the existing site, and we feel that's, that's conservative to the, to the point of being overly restrictive. Um, and, you know, negatively impacting, you know, the, the attractiveness and, and the, um. The cost of the project and the size of the basin, because the way you remedy that is you make the, the proposed pond a lot larger. Um, and we don't, don't feel that's necessary and we, we don't want to expand the pond towards the street, you know, impacting neighbors. Um, we, we prefer to, you know, take our, we believe it's still a conservative, we're not going with the lower recharge rate that we feel we could justify, we're kind of in the middle. And, and we feel that's appropriate and, and, you know, we've, we've had, you know, as you said, we've had a discussion with them, we've kind of. Reached an impasse between ourselves and so that's why we, we're looking for. Either the board or as you suggested, the new town planner, you know, as an, as an impartial, impartial third party. Um, to, to, to resolve, you know, this, this final leg of the dispute.
And, and this by May, just broad strokes, the takeaway is. Going with the, the model that EP suggested is bigger basins, um, which, you know. I understand we're sensitive to the cost, you may not be as sensitive to the cost, but. Impact to term for the residents there is basins are getting closer to Blackstone Street and taking away from lawn area that residents would be able to enjoy. That's really on the ground, that would be the difference, bigger basins means less landscaping and less lawn area for people to use.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna deviate a little bit from what we usually do, because we're gonna have some questions. Uh, I'd like to open up to the public. Yeah, personally, I always say that. This has been a long process. And we, we've cut this down almost. Dramatic, I can't thank you enough for working with the family. I know the residents appreciate it, the board appreciates it. I think we're, um, approaching the goal line, so to speak, if you want for things in, uh, sports terminology. I'd like to hear from the public on the, the area. We've come a long way from the original proposal. And I, I wa- wanna remind you that, um. When this came in front of us almost a year ago. Uh, feeling intent was that, um. The, the, this board, um. Wouldn't listen to the neighbors and we were very, um, pro applicant, and I think we've, uh. Over the many years, we, we've shown that that's not the case. Uh, and I wanna thank you for working with us, so now, as I said twice before, any questions from the public?
Hi, um, Erica Wolf, we live at two sixty-eight Blackstone Street.
Right across the street.
Right across the street from the driveway, so a couple of questions, um, first and foremost on light pollution. Because that's coming right into, directly into our bedrooms and the main living area. Um, why was the street changed? So now entrance and exit is coming out of the same road, I, I just have no idea why it was changed, so it's a curiosity question and then I would like, like pollution addressed.
Sure, so the original plan, having a, a, an exit onto North Street. Um, was part of a much larger project, uh, more than twice of what you see right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we also heard from, from police at, um, and others that concerned that North Street was not a good location for a driveway at all. Um, and so, um, focusing on Blackstone Street, um, alleviated that situation where we're gonna have traffic coming out to North Street. Um, but at this point, with a much smaller project, um, to have an exit going out onto North Street would. Uh, have a real negative impact on the conservation areas, we'll go right through those woods, which we were trying to avoid. Um, to maximize the screening for, you know, everyone from this project. Um, the, the driveway now, it is positioned. So that, um, cars exiting at night would not be shining directly into the, to the homes across the street, that, that's on purpose. Uh, we wanted it to be angled, so that wasn't the case, um, so that's what, that's what cars at night. Um, and then, you know, lighting on site is gonna be, you know, typical residential, but it's gonna be dark sky compliant downward facing and.
You're explaining dark sky compliant.
Sure, um, essentially, the light doesn't leave the property, um, it's there to light what it needs to light, but doesn't spill over our, our two adjacent properties. And that's how it's been designed for this project.
Right, but there, I also was reading in here that they're quite high, eighteen to nineteen feet high, so how, how was that? I mean, we're directly across the street and I know you said you moved the driveway, I still see that directly in front of our driveway. And my father, his mailbox is on the other side of the road, I'm concerned in many ways, because he lives by himself. Um, the congestion is the next one, but I'll let you finish with the light pollution, I'm jumping ahead.
Right, so the, so the, I mean, poles that are there are as high as they need to be, but again, the. The lighting fixtures shine directly down, these aren't lights that shoot up into the sky and spill over all over. Um, um, the area, they're, they're aimed downwards and they're shielded, so that light goes directly down to what it needs to illuminate, but doesn't leave the property.
So the parking lot that's going to be right there for the overflow is also directly in front of our property, so. I, I, I'm, again, I'm just envisioning light pollution, a lot of light pollution, can you address? That, I know you said there's gonna be a lot of parking in driveways, I also know, um. I've, I've grown up here and I've seen cars pull in and out in the seventies when they used to go in that backfield and party. I know what it looks like to see one car's headlights coming out in the middle of the night, because my bedroom was in the front, so I'm speaking firsthand. I woke up at twelve, one, two in the morning as a little kid, having the lights. Come out, especially in the summer when all the windows are open with no AC, so, I, I, I'm just trying to. Understand this light pollution.
I'm not, so I'm not an expert at all, but over time. I've come to understand that when they say the light won't spill over, it's not gonna illuminate. Your home or your property, you're gonna still see light, you're still gonna see there's a light pole and it, and, but it's gonna be illuminating. The area, so you're still gonna see it.
Right, and, but I'm concerned about the cars coming and going.
Right, and, and something I'm wondering about, and I know that they took pains to reconfigure the driveway. And perhaps it's a conversation you can have with them is perhaps. Paying for some bushes to be planted, would that, would that work?
I, I, that driveway is directly in front, it, it's. Going to be going into our main bedroom areas.
Right, but if there was, if there was plantings.
Across the street.
Not across the street, but on your property, would that help?
On our property?
Yeah.
I highly doubt they could be high enough.
From the cars, your concern is the cars.
Right.
How about a fence?
That would be.
So, so now you're impeding his ability to see the traffic and drive in and out of his own driveway, he's eighty-nine years old. He has to walk to cross the street to get his mail, I don't want to cause. Um, a catastrophe potentially because of light pollution.
Right, so it would, we're just trying to find maybe solutions that can, that can, would help, you know.
I mean, we don't mind the cars going in, those lights aren't going to affect us, the lights coming out, well.
And I get what you're saying, because it's gonna move, right, if the cars turn, the light goes like this or goes like that and you're gonna see that on your walls.
It's going to be, if a car is backing in and out of there, no matter how you slice it, we will see the light.
Right, and what I'm wondering is, is, is there a, the, is there a solution or opportunity where we can? The applicant would, uh, spending their money, but they would do something on your property. And it would be considerations of sight lines and things like that, that would block a lot of that movement. Moving light, is there anything that you can think of that we could utilize?
Honestly, I, I can't, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to make sure he's safe, trying to. Take his own car in and out of that driveway onto directly across the street from a development now. And by putting bushes there, now he can't see, there's a very sharp curve on Blackstone Street there, you already can't see the cars. Coming around that corner and they do speed there, um, so now.
But if the screening was moved back into the yard, then there would still be enough on the sidewalk.
Further in, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, would that be something?
That might, that might work, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, plus, he likes to sit out, even in the summertime, he likes to sit outside and watch the traffic and people.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think impeding that would, you know, be kind of a, a negative.
Yeah, no, I have to agree, this is just a, another neighbor, I just met him, so, they, they see him more than, than I do on a daily basis.
Yeah, well, uh, so the, the short version, we're open to suggestions, if, if you have an idea, we're certainly happy to. To work with the applicant and, and, and see what we can do to mitigate that impact. So you live there, so you tell me what you think might work.
Let me talk to my father and figure something that's safe.
And, and I would just note again. What's that?
A horseshoe would be much better. I'm surprised the fire department doesn't speak up for that one driveway.
So, I will speak up now, um, I do not like this plan. But unfortunately, this plan has been in motion before I became the fire chief, so I don't have a lot to say at this point right now. I'll be, and the board knows how I feel, I do not like cul-de-sacs, I do not like one-way in, one-way out, they're not safe. Unfortunately, this is in motion before I came in.
Well, I know Chris actually said he wanted a horseshoe.
Yeah, yeah, which is why I'm, I'm sitting here flabbergasted, first, the whole thing. Um, changed from the exit from North Street, but I understand that, please, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult in any way, I totally understand that. North Street is awful, but Blackstone Street's becoming like that and I just assumed it would be. A horseshoe and then I got these plans which don't specify anything other than it's coming in and out in the same spot and I'm just. I, I don't know how we got to that point.
I mean, what we've tried to do over time, as we're going on for almost a year, is to try to reduce the impact. On the residents as best we can. This was a substantially larger development, encroaching, impacting more residents. When it first came through. When they cognizant of what's going on in North Street, Blackstone Street, input from the, uh, new fire chief. We, we are just trying to minimize the impact on this. For as many residents in Bellevue as we can, unfortunately, the horseshoe open is across the street.
No, I, I get all that, if this was regular houses, we'd be fine with that, I'm not trying to say that you're not doing it, but. It used to be agricultural property and it got rezoned.
Correct.
So, we have two properties, can we rezone our properties just like that?
That is something that, that, that you have to bring forward to the town.
So, but the point being, it, it was out of our control that it got re, rezoned. When we purchased this property over fifty years ago, it was agricultural and now it's rezoned, which neither here nor the other, that, that's. Your prerogative.
Well, not, not necessarily, it's not, it's, it's prerogative of the town, but go ahead.
Well, I, I didn't mean it that way, I just mean, it, it got approved, whoever that process happened, I don't know, but. Um, we're not privy to all the details and the, the viewing of all of these things. And, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm just. I'm very concerned for my father's safety. So light pollution was.
And we are as well.
Mister Chairman, if, if they go home tonight, think it over and come up with. A solution, maybe it's plantings, maybe it's a fence, what's the best way for them to relay their ideas to us?
Do you have any ideas off the top of your head?
They can certainly communicate, I don't have ideas beyond what we've tried to do, which is to have a driveway positioned directly across from the property line. And to minimize impact on, on the houses that are there, these are not, the driveway is not gonna have cars. Um, shining lights into windows, it is, you know, there is a driveway across the street. Um, but again, it's a, it's fifteen, um, units, two-bedroom, you know. The number of cars that would be, you know, kept there at all times probably gonna be in the maybe twenty, twenty or so. Um, so you think about a typical street that has, you know, maybe twenty cars on it that park there, how often are they streaming out? At, at, on, at, at a, you know, steady, uh, basis, it's, it's, it's really never. Uh, I'm not saying that there won't be, you know, in dark hours, someone going to work early in the morning or coming out at night, that their lights won't. Shine out, that's gonna happen, but I think the driveway is positioned as, as best we can to minimize those impacts. They're not directly, it's not directly across from the house, it's across from the property line and to an extent the driveway. Um, screening on, on their property, I don't know, honestly. And, and if, and if we hear those ideas, they come through the, um, to Amy, come back to us, I mean, if they're a condition of approval that the board imposes. You know, y- you're free to do that, um, to require some screening on the property and minimize glare, to the extent that it would work, I don't, I don't know. Um, that there's what, what you'd be able to do to guarantee that somebody never has headlights across the street that are ever. Um, coming towards them at a certain period of time, but.
We can, we can't control that, we cannot control that.
Right, but.
I'm, I'm not asked.
No, but I, I, I was thinking we can, but there may be something we could look at.
Has the town considered moving the mailboxes to the other side of the street?
Yeah, we, we did, we discussed that at an earlier meeting.
Okay.
Um.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no, it's the only reason I'm chuckling is we looked at it. And, um, we, I don't wanna say we got our hands slapped, but the post office is not open to that discussion. It's, it's be- beyond our control, we've asked for it several times in town. And, um, we get the, the same answer.
Is there a reasoning behind that, that I wouldn't understand?
I, I thought it was a bureaucratic reasoning, but it's how they set up their deliveries for the day. And alternating from one side of the street to another, big pain misses in position on them, as a rule we don't like to do. So we've, we've been asking for this by more than one. Now, conceivably, what we could look at. Is maybe, um. Signage approaching that area to, uh, control traffic, to slow traffic down. Um, perhaps, uh, I don't know. Maybe a, 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 a crosswalk there, that's, I, I, I don't know. Oh yeah, we're gonna have to look at something to protect other residents there. But unfortunately, I wish I could say, simply move the mailbox and have it double-sided. So he doesn't have to go into the street, we, we, we can ask again, but we've been told it's not gonna happen. You may wanna ask as well, Lynn.
Okay, I will.
What I would do is ask for a double-sided mailbox.
Okay.
So that it opens from both sides, so the man who delivers from the front of the mailbox. And your father opens up the back of the mailbox, pulls out the mail and doesn't have to go to the street.
Then that would make the mailbox on the other side of the road.
That would, put the mailbox on your side of it.
So he would come on our side of the road to.
Well, you can ask, and they're gonna, I think they're gonna tell you no. Or you can ask. Well, that is how you should. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, my name's Don DePardo. I live at one seventy-eight Blackstone. Uh, I remember through this process, at least a couple of times, I believe one of the board members uh, raised concern about the shared septic. I don't know if there was any further discussion beyond just that comment. He really wasn't specific. Um, I personally have a concern about the amount of water that's gonna be put into the soil because of, it, it's a very, very wet area. I live quite a distance from there, but I, I have standing water in my yard now, and my basement is filling with water as I sit here.
Okay.
So, um, so that being said, uh, I'm just curious about the concern. I believe it was the board member that, that's not here tonight, so you may not be able to answer that question.
Uh, he is the, um, new town planner, effective in May. We can get his opinion on that.
I can speak to the volume of water a little bit, if you'd like. So, um, we're a bit further along in the design process, uh, and so the way that the system's going to be designed, um, it's, it's going to be a dose system. So essentially, it'll be a pump that will activate, um, several times a day to distribute a certain amount of water to the field. Uh, and the idea is that you want evenly distributed so that it doesn't, um, all arriving within the shower anyway. Um, and the system is sized such that each time it's pumped up, um, there will only be, I believe it's point zero one five feet of water, standing water in the bottom of this field that will then soak into the ground. Um, that, that will happen a- around ten times a day. So you're, you're looking at maybe a couple of inches of water being injected into the ground un- un- under the square of the septic system each day. It's, it's very little water in the scope of outdoor hydrology in terms of, you know. You receive more rain in this field today, um, than you would receive, ever receive. It's not, it's not on the same scale. It's like a rainstorm.
Okay.
Uh, and so we, you know, this is not, septic systems are not typically a source of uh, groundwater problems for our buggers.
I did have one, one thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you had, you had just brought up the woman over there about possibly adding signage. This probably isn't a decision here and really is not to do with this project. But that stretch of Blackstone Street between North Street and South Main Street, there are no traffic signs. No speed limit signs. There was one when I moved in twenty years ago. I think it disappeared when the street was redone. But there's no speed limit signs. I live on the very bad corner near Saddleback Hill Road. There's no signage for anything like that. So, I mean, I don't know who would make the decision to add that. I, but I, I realize it's probably not you. And my final.
No, but, but no, but I, I'm sorry. I speak on a turn sometimes, and, you know, things I like to say, I like, you know, I would like to say. And, you know, we can work through that process. I, I do think the, um, let me step back for a minute. I think we're in construction on, um, South Main Street over the past summer. We saw a lot more traffic in this area. Um, more people were using it, more people are going fast. I, we, we have raised a concern about signage. It's something we'll look at. Um, and deal with, you know, the appropriate parties in town to see what we can do.
And the only other thing I would say, when you talked about the mailbox, uh, I believe a few years back, the mailboxes on Center Street were on both sides and that they got moved to one side. So I don't know what act, what act of Congress, you know, made that happen, but.
I, I think, sure. It's pretty much like an act of Congress.
Yeah.
To get it done. That could have been, I, I, I don't know. I don't live on Center Street.
Yes.
That was not in front of the board. But I do know, we've had asked that question in the past.
Thank you.
And it's come back. But I, I'm not gonna stop them from going down to the local office and ask the question. I've always thought at school, you don't ask, you don't get. So that's where I came from. I think we have some, uh, issues we need to get addressed.
I think, yes.
I think we're getting.
There's minor, though, there's minor ones. Do you feel comfortable having the two consultants go back and forth and then also reaching out to our new town planner? Or is that gonna be too late, or what, what do you?
By May, and then again, the, the items that we raised, we had the back and forth with environmental partners, and they, their final comment on all the things that I've brought up were, this is for the board to decide. So, I mean, we're, we're comfortable with those items being addressed as conditions of approval. If you wanna turn to the, to the planner to, to be an arbiter, that, that, that's, you know, certainly permissible as well. But I don't know that, I really don't think there's anything to be gained at this point from the, from the pure viewer discussing with our engineers, because they've had that back and forth, and, and the only items that are not closed out or, or listed as, just show that on the plan, are, this is for the board to decide whether it grants this or not. So I think it's conditions of approval or waiver decisions through the board to look at when, when considering the draft decision. I think that's, but from our perspective, we think that's where we're at.
I, I wanna, get the, get the flavor of the board. Um, Nick.
Not really have much. I, we lost the dumpster area, right? I remember it.
They're gonna show the dumpster.
Yep, so it's now in the driveway.
Yep, yep.
So accessibility parking, I think that's something I would not waive. Um, speaking as one member, um, the bicycles, you know, you brought that up, um. I'd be more concerned about the kids coming out and waiting on the, the school bus down there. We talked about, well, we're on having some sort of area where the kids can congregate and not in the driveway. Um, maybe that's an opportunity to, I don't wanna speak for the rest of the board, but you know, horse trade a, a bike rack for an area to sit, you know, for the kids just to be around so that they're not in the street in the middle of a real busy road. So I'd, I'd kinda like to see that.
Through the chair, if I may, we, we do now have sidewalks on both sides of the entire driveway and cul-de-sacs. So to the extent that any of these two bedrooms are gonna have kids and then they wait for the bus, you know, they have a sidewalk area. It's not like they just be standing in the middle of, of, of Blackstone Street.
Both sides on the end.
Correct, correct.
A reason for additional panels to expand the standing area.
I'm, I'm just thinking, you get, I mean, just think of the kids, kids ready for a school bus. There's gonna be, they're not, you know, a little bit more than than two sidewalks, I think is the key, but.
If I may, I believe one of the traffic recommendations was to widen the sidewalks that we have to show on the.
It, it was, correct.
So I think it's five feet, I think it's five feet to eight feet, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so maybe something a little down by the street.
Yeah, so.
Where some, some, next time or many other times, you could come in and talk about that some more. Yeah.
Yes, we just have to show them on the map.
Right, so.
Yeah, just someplace, I mean, I'm just concerned a bunch of kids sit, you know, you get that many places, you might have one kid per place. Where are they gonna stand, you know? And there's, there are how many different schools? You know, the type of simple math, like, you know. You gotta use your strengths when you get snowed.
Sure, I know. So, through the chair again, what, what EP has recommended that we show on the plans, I think we'll address this. What we're already either gonna do is condition of approval, or if, if you need an update before you, before you issue a decision, I, I think it'll take care of that.
Uh, so I, in, in terms of expediency, I am in favor of all the positions that the applicant's taken with regard to the waivers and everything else, except for the looped system based on the recommendation of fire chief. And, um, I would defer the, um, the other issue regarding the size of the drainage or the rate of whatever to Rob. And that, that would be satisfactory. I mean, I don't, you know, the, the way that the town works with buses, just so everybody knows, is the, this, this area doesn't get to decide where the bus stops. There, there's a guy in, in that building over there that says, oh, there's, there's six kids here, so we're gonna stop right there. So.
I'll make those calls.
Yeah, I think the sidewalk's fine. Um, the only question I have for you, though, um, if you can work with the, a butter about the lights and find a solution and brainstorm together. Uh, but my other question was, is one of, one of the things that I've come to learn, we've come to learn is the landscaping plan and the, and the, and the, the barrier that that creates, doesn't come to full fruition for many years in the future. So what I'm hoping you could help me with is, particularly with the landscaping that's right on, um, Blackstone Street, i- is there a way to plant more mature trees? Um, so that the, the, we achieve the screening that we're gonna, we were hopeful for, um, earlier.
Sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to, to Gene Ace, but I believe the way we've got the landscaping plan right now is where, what's, what's our height of our giant arboribides? To start.
To start.
They do. We're just looking, because we, we, we did look at this to, to beef that up.
I believe it's, it's, it's classified as a, a twelve-foot, um, minimum.
So giant arboribides are twelve feet high to start, uh, to get planted. Perfect.
Thank you.
Someone in the back, anxiety, two fifty four Blackstone. Couple, couple of the arboribides, uh, with their population in that area, useless. Uh, the bottom five feet of that will be gone within the, the first winter. Um, you want examples? Go behind, um, D C U Bank over in Franklin, and look at the arboribides in the back there. They're literally gone from the, the five feet down. Um, busing, um, is there a way for the school bus to pull off of the street completely? Because of that corner, I can guarantee you that a bus will get hit. I, I'll guarantee it, um, because I almost got hit there today trying to get my mail. They speed on that street. Signs will do nothing. They ignore it. They ignore people walking across the street. They ignore people walking down the street. Um, and then the other thing was, this winter, we witnessed the amount of water in that first fifty feet that pulled up and froze over to where you could actually ice skate and play hockey there. So as far as drainage, is something's gotta be done a little bit more than what's being done. Because there's all, it, it was a big section.
Just to clarify the location, are you speaking of in the field?
No, I'm talking the first fifty foot entrance off the road.
Can you illustrate on the plan behind you?
Yep.
Right here, okay.
Literally, and it was solid, probably solid a foot deep.
So, um, the, the town's stormwater regulations do require, um, that we consider frozen conditions in our stormwater design. Um, and so I believe the performance standard is, uh, you can't make it any worse than it currently is. Uh, and that's for the twenty-five-year storm, which is about six and a half inches of rain. Uh, and it's supposed to be, um, for frozen conditions, so assume no ground uh, water soaks into the ground during those conditions, and make sure that our stormwater system still functions appropriately.
So I know Linda Wade, that the horseshoe that's around off of, uh, North Street, they have culverts. They basically trenches right down the sides of the roads to take care of drainage.
So if you look on the plan behind you, so there is a swale proposed right along the side of the road.
Yeah.
Um, and that will be directing all water directly towards the wetlands to the northeast. Um, and then the, the big, um, backwards L-shaped basin there um, has an overflow that also discharges to the level. So all water is directed away from the street uh, and toward the well. That, that's, that's the key to your stormwater design.
And then the other, the other question was, you know, one of the residents two doors down from you, um, mentioned a concern about.
Sir, get your, your, your questions to the board.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get yourself in trouble, sir.
The neighbor a couple doors down requested, you know, access to his property back there. And there's no easement for him to get to his property that's landlocked, that's surrounded by water, so.
I thought you addressed that, didn't you?
We, we, we talked about it, but we, we didn't, we didn't get, we didn't get anywhere with it. Um, it's, I mean, there is a landlocked parcel back there, um.
That's a, it's a field.
Correct.
All right.
There's a field, there's a field just to the right, if you're looking into the property, the very first field to the right, um, behind the wetland, um, the gentleman two doors down owns it. His only access to it is through that field, which Mr. Canoria gave him rights to be able to walk through many, many years.
Where it's, our field is right next to it.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, with the wetlands there, they have no access to that field. Um, and that's, you know, they asked for a way to get to their field to be able to check on their property. And that hasn't been addressed yet.
All right. Yep. Uh, very, very last thing, um. Is there a reason why the sidewalk doesn't wrap around the visitor parking spaces? If there's cars parked there, there's kids walking through the end of the street, they're walking out into the road to get around around the vehicles. Is there a reason why the sidewalk doesn't, is it the snow storage?
Nope, if I may, um, it's actually one of the, uh, traffic comments as well, I believe, was to add sidewalk behind it, so that'll be.
Do you wanna check if there's any comments on Zoom, and then we can.
Any comments on Zoom?
Hi. Hi, yeah. This is, uh, Bill Kirkoff from, uh, two eighty-nine Blackstone Street.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just wondering, um, hopefully I'm not too loud, um, I'm wondering if there's not gonna be any sidewalks put on Blackstone Street in front of the project.
That's my understanding, sir.
And are, and are there any road, there's no road improvements that are gonna be required? The concrete, the asphalt on most of Blackstone Street is crumbling. And this is a, a corner there, the road's in really rough shape as it is.
That has not been, uh, proposed at this point in time. I believe the town has.
So how does that, how do I have a voice on that? Like, I, it's, it's time for them to address Blackstone Street. And, you know, to make that.
Go ahead, sir. I think what you can do is there's a roads committee in town.
And we.
Okay.
I mean, when you look at the plan, what they have done is they've added a lot of the open space, and that's a, that would be a whole different ballgame when you have an applicant have to re- repair and improve certain roadways on their dime, where the plan that they are, we're looking at now is they gave more green space.
So what I would suggest is you can look at approaching the, um, the roads committee in specific regards to Blackstone Street.
DPW might be able to say if or when it's on the reserving list.
It might be on the reservicing list, yeah, I don't know that.
We, we don't have the answers to that, sir.
No.
Uh, I don't wanna discourage you not to proceed.
No. I think there might be, I'm not sure if there's.
Is anyone else on Zoom? Uh, Bill, thank you. Uh, I'd hope that we could start to wrap this up. I just think we have a little too many outstanding items.
Could we at the eleven?
What I like to do is, um, two things.
Yep.
I'd like to, uh, extend this to the eleven. With the goal of addressing outstanding issues. Having, um, the town, the, um, consultant or actually the planning department get together with the applicant and take in consideration the issues that were raised. Amy, while you're out trying to find the, um, document.
It's in your Dropbox.
Yeah, but he raises specific issues on certain numbers. You can just give her a call and outline what those issues were.
Yep.
I know they've been captured on the, um, audio and video. I think if you could call it tomorrow, it would speak things up.
These are, I, I was, to share, these are the items that I raised in terms of where environmental partners have said, this is a part of the board's.
I took some rap, no.
Then I can forward it.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine to thirty-three.
No.
I think like eight, you know, seven, eight, nine or something.
Yeah, and again.
That would be great.
Through the chair, again, all those items are things that I think are, you know, can be waiver decisions or something that the board can decide as conditions of approval. There, there, you know, there's really not much more back and forth that needs to be done.
I, I agree. I think we're getting very close. If you could just take in consideration the comments raised by, you know, the, the trees.
Yep.
And, um, I would ask if you, if you don't mind, I know you want, you wanna put mature trees in. At the same time, if we could, uh, try to find things to grow past.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, if I may, we've heard loud and clear that these are very hungry deer in the area. And they like arborvitae, so the plantings that we have chosen, this is, this is in the E P letter, they, they agree. We've chosen deer-resistant shrubs and trees everywhere. We're not looking to put in twelve-footers that turn into lollipops the next, the next season at all. This was on purpose, we heard that loud and clear, the species that we picked are deer-resistant to the extent possible. So, and again, there, there are arborvitae, twelve-footers, they're, they're designed to grow fast. So I think, I think that's handled in the landscape plan.
And then if you can exchange information with David Cross. See what you can do. What's the decision deadline?
I believe till outwards of May. So I think we're fine, you know, maybe the, the goal could be at the eleventh and then maybe at the twenty-fifth have something, if you're comfortable, a decision maybe for the twenty-first or that's the one.
That's where I would like to go. I entertain a motion for a continuance to April eleven.
Yep, I just want to just say one thing before I forget it. So, speaking for myself and maybe for everybody, all of the things that you articulated, your position on those waivers and things are, I think, reasonable. But the, the chief's recommendations and the only other one I would defer to is Rob on that. But all the other ones, from my point of view, I don't know what, if that, if that's helpful for you in taking the next step for you to know, and I don't know if you want to take the pulse of everyone else, if that, if you need that information now.
We're certainly happy to hear what, what the board thinks and to work with staff on those outstanding items, absolutely. Whatever you.
Yeah.
Ideally, we could try to wrap this up. As soon as possible.
That'd be great.
Possibly on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we have the first, second?
Second.
Okay.
Want to call for the move? No more discussion.
Okay.
Then it's I.
Right I.
Don't worry.
You won.
Nick, I.
Good, very good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Miss, thank you very much, and I want to thank your, your partner.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ma'am, don't be afraid to approach.
I, I actually don't.
I'd like to say that whatever you think might work, contact Amy and she'll convey it for the hour.
Okay.
So try to do that before April eleven. So if we go to the town, the planning board's website.
The two oh six mechanic's three side presentation.
Okay.
Can I borrow a quick little stool or I can just pop on a chair and talk in here? Thank you.
Okay.
H three, okay.
It's okay. Okay, I have copies in your hand, let's do. Hi, Chelsea Salvatore with Parkus Partners, back again to talk about two oh six mechanic, building colors and our associated signage. So the first two pages of the packet here are exhibit A and B, which were included in our planning board decision back in May of twenty twenty-two. So this is the color scheme that we proposed originally. And to help, because I think renderings and prints just don't really display the colors properly. I have samples of our paint colors, so I would like to pass, I only have three copies, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
But these are actual samples and textures.
You can leave one for the audience if anyone wants.
Oh, sure. So this, and this is the associated elevation. So I think they look different on, you know, rendered elevations, printed plans, so I think it's good for you to see and feel them live. But you've got the, the base of this is that first textured sample here. And then you've got an accent of the brown. The bottom, which is hard to tell, it looks like a shadow, but the bottom here is the dark brown, the black beam. And then the accent here is the blue. And I know we talked about the blue a lot last time, so I wanted you guys to see it. It's blue. I think it looks different than it does in the rendering, so just wanted to come here, make sure everybody's okay with that, this is the approved color scheme. If the blue's too much, you can talk about another color and substitute with one of the ones that is already within the scheme. We can, we can try and tone it down.
Do you want, do you want, do you want input from us?
I would like to talk about colors, yes, and your thoughts before we transition to the signage.
Okay.
That's okay.
We can just talk about comments for the both.
Definitely blue.
It's blue.
And you can slightly, a little, a little more muted, I think I would be more in favor of.
You mean towards the gray tone?
It had some gray in it, yeah, for sure.
Is, is, is it, just so I know, is it this blue or is it the other blue that we're talking?
So these are two different façades, so this is mechanic and maple, right? So this main entry is blue. And then.
But is it this blue?
It is.
So the exhibit A is this blue?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that's why I figured I would bring the samples, because I, the renderings just don't translate, I don't think. And then this is the entrance down on Maple.
Also the, the old exhibit A from.
Yes.
And then, but there's other ones, another proposal.
Well, this is the corner of mechanic and maple. Am I understanding you correctly?
Uh, uh.
And then just further down.
This one?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, yeah, you're skipping ahead in my packet, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure.
The first two, exhibit A and B are from our planning board approval in May of twenty twenty-two.
And that would be.
That would be that blue.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You want my opinion?
I do.
Okay. I, I'm sure if I'm in with the panel board member, now that we see it in real life, I think we were hoping this was a wedge wood or a grayish one, it certainly isn't. The one thing I do like about this is, and you've heard me specifically mention, the earth tone colors. And you also heard me mention the fact that coming up Maple Street, it's kind of layering too.
Yeah.
As opposed to driving down Maple, south on Maple Street. What I like about the colors from five five twenty-two is the dark brown.
Okay.
I know you gave us other presentations and other colors that show they grow in a lot of shade and more orangy.
Yeah.
I want to go more towards the colors on five twenty-two.
Okay, so this is in between the concrete panels and the reveals you're talking about, this gridded pattern.
And that, that's in a break-up to building on both sides.
Okay.
And I think although I'm not on social media, you know, you hear a lot of things from social media. I think the intent of the different colors in the windows was to break up the building. So it didn't have the traditional, or have some.
Yeah.
And right now, we're not going to be completing. That we've been hearing about, you know.
The person.
Or, yes. That's why I want to go back and try to replicate the colors as best we can from five twenty-two.
Yes.
But tell me if there's anything wrong. The the color that is the off-white.
Yep.
Someone hand me that.
This?
Yes.
Yeah, the textured one.
Are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are you comfortable even the grow or dark color?
So the color is fine with me, I just want to go back to my contractor and the painting supplier, because that's, it's it's just like a caulking.
Yeah.
So I want to confirm that we can get that in a color where we can make it dark.
But if you look at the top picture and the Arco picture, eighty-three, twenty-five, twenty-four.
Yes.
It sits, seems to flow better.
I, I see what you're saying.
On the five twenty-two.
I see what you're saying.
And if, excuse me, if you want to pass this out, I can share.
I have one too, if you want to hold yours.
Okay. You want to pass out for a member?
Sure.
Just so they see what we made there.
Thank you.
I, I think that, that's my viewpoint.
What's the green?
Oh, can I get to that in one second? That's, that's just a street sign, those are just the obstructions that you guys wanted to see in the rendering. It, it says one forty north, south, it just doesn't have a text on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Is, is the lighter color too much dead space? Maybe it's suggested that it might need to be broken up a little bit.
Like this breaks it up.
They're dark, they're dark colors.
Just the, the, this breaks it up, so it doesn't look so long.
Correct.
What's done here, here.
It doesn't break it up.
It doesn't break it up.
Yeah.
So that's why I like the dark red.
Yeah.
This gives it, it, it just, it doesn't look so long. The building.
And that's what we looked at two years.
And this blue in between breaks up that, the length.
And also it's also a different, yeah, it's a different state.
Right, what do you mean?
Are they intended slightly?
Oh, the panels, yes.
So it breaks it up. That was our goal, for this process.
Yeah.
What, Billy, what would you say? The panels?
They're intended a little bit.
They are, they're not, this, this is not just.
Oh, well, no, I guess the facade is flat, but the, the parapet at the top, like.
Okay. Yeah, you're, it gives a look. You're going to add to that top of that?
No.
No, I'm.
The panels themselves are at different height.
They are.
They are. They do, and they also.
But they're not.
No, 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 not.
We discussed at the beginning, just let you know, because I remember this. He, they mentioned we'd make them six inches to give you a little definition, and I said, could you go with twelve? They said, no problem, we went with hundred, it's flat.
And that was during the approval process?
At the very, very beginning.
Yes.
Right out of the gate.
Okay.
Yep.
I followed in, that was before.
There was supposed to be some depth to it and stuff to make it broken up look.
Yeah, I wonder if they tried to achieve that just by these darker, achieving it with paint instead of.
That's exactly what they tried, or are trying to do. Right, but I was at the beginning, I was sure that, well, that's not going to work, we need some, and they even mentioned six-inch definition, I said, well, six inches isn't going to be much on a building that size, I want twelve, and they said, yeah.
Well, you've heard, you've heard two members, you remember.
Yeah.
It was going to be.
So I didn't know if they were metal frame, the pockets there to move it out and, and add some definition and.
We don't have plans to do, no, we don't. Yeah, no, I apologize, this is the first sign that I'm hearing of it. This was permitted, obviously, with Howland, and then we were brought on as a partner, but I'll certainly pull back, oh, thank you.
Yeah, we were.
If you look too, like, if you look at these two, this one's just obviously flat, whereas here, this one has the dimension where it breaks it all up.
Yeah, that, the grout, the caulking matches the paint, which is why you don't see it.
Yeah.
And the renderings, the, the light is a little tricky to get, right?
But, and it's nice that the windows are down here, I'm hoping that those windows are still.
Yes, we have, there, we call, yeah, storefronts, we have sort of three along that.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
You know what, it's interesting though, if, at least this rendering shows the blues to be bad. That is interesting. I wonder what the, and if you look at the other one too, it gives at least the appearance. So, well, I guess we'll take a little, like, speaking for myself.
Yep.
I think the board is really looking to try to make this as tasteful of a warehouse as we can, knowing that it's a warehouse. But the more of a conservative, dignified, dark blue.
Okay.
You know, and not, and I, I forget what they call the, the finish, there's matte.
Yep.
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah.
But we're, we're, we're not looking for anything flashy, gaudy, we want something tasteful.
Yep.
And if you can help us find that tasteful, well, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, and, but just the blue we're talking about.
Well.
I don't think we're changing much of the colors from the five twenty-two, other than the one.
Right.
And the dark, the dark red.
Okay, so maybe I try and get some other samples for the, the blue?
That would be fantastic, you got, this, and every printer is going to print the colors, and I appreciate you bringing these.
Exactly.
Because that would be very helpful, but dignified, tasteful, conservative, dark blue that doesn't necessarily. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
I think you know.
Yep. Heard noted, noted on the blue.
Not until we get to the sun.
Nothing else.
And then I just had one last question on the paint, so in our decisions, I think it might be number eight. It notes that on the dock wall, there should be a, a dark stripe.
Correct.
So, do you want that to, so you can kind of see it in the rendering, but the, the black beam color, the darkest color, is on the bottom here? Do you want it to match that? And this is the, this is the only facade, right, that you want the stripe, it's not a band around.
That's coming from the west.
Right.
Yes.
The one you see driving up.
Yes.
Is there any way you can, I'm sorry. Oh, is it in our packet?
Yeah.
Uh, you might have it, but it's very small.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see, that's a very dark color.
Yeah.
It does go, this color wraps all the way around, so it's on the bottom of every sign, but are, the decision called out just specifically this dock door wall having a strike.
What do you suggest?
I, I would suggest the dark, the black beam, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then you're the one that added all the trees right here.
That was your, your decision.
Yeah, and then you added all those trees right here, remember?
Okay. Same next.
Glad I did, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so colors noted on the blue, I'll get some different samples, and then we'll add the additional stripe along the dock wall. Okay, and then, so we're transitioning to the signage. I've got a couple things, so the welcome to belly hand sign, I just want to talk about quickly, because this obviously looks different than what the previous one I filmed. And the pylon. So we talked about these two signs and the fact that they should have their own identity, because this is going to be your sign, it doesn't really have anything to do with two oh six mechanic, and then this would be our, our building signage. So we tried to take the stone from across on Maple, and it's got brown tones. So we previously showed it a little more gray. So we took the brown tones, these colors are from the building, so they accent the building. And we added the stone wall, the curved wall, to match the other side. You had also asked for some updated renderings that showed the obstruction from that intersection. So that's what this is, and I hope it really is that properly, but you've got, you know, all the mast arms, the poles, the signs. Day one rendering, because I know my landscaping is not going to be big and beautiful day one. Unfortunately, in the program, you can't really choose little saplings, little, you know, fresh planting, so this is what I'm calling day one, because everything is going to be bare, you're not really going to see it. And then this would be with our current landscaping. Sizes and quantities are accurate in terms of height and quantity of shrubs. But, you know, the hydrangeas are rhododendrons, things like that. Um, but you know, the the hydrangeas are rhododendrons, things like that. Um, but I did also include a landscaping plan, just so you can see. Sort of the, the density and the robustness of the plantings around these signs. Um, we've already started doing some of the landscaping too, so you can see it out there, um. We also, I don't know if you drove a by, it was blown down today, um, but we put a plywood mock-up.
Yeah.
Out there, so what we got was to accurately buy, do the height and the size of. This portion, the welcome to Bellingham portion, without the wall. Um, but we feel like we sized it and located it appropriately, we did a couple drive-bys, and it seemed pretty. Pretty clear, pretty legible, um, and that's what these renderings are based off of as well, that location.
Is that still there?
It was blown down today, but I can, I'm gonna have Clark go put it back up.
The pictures I got on my Dropbox, you knew driving towards it, whoever took that snapshot. I didn't think you could see that sign at all, and then I look at it on this rendering, and you can see it fine, it looks like it's shifted to the right. Instead of that center in the building, which I could see you doing, because you would be able to see that sign a lot better. If it was moved down, with maple seed a little more. Just from my personal driving and my, I I did the same thing, I took pictures of anything a year and a, a year ago or so. And said the same thing, that's why I asked for two signs, cause you really can't see that thing.
Yes.
If you come in the other way, you're not gonna see it at all.
Yeah.
So.
But did you do, did you do the drive-by recently?
I go there every day.
Like, okay, so you stop.
And, well, I wash my car four times a week, so I go right there to go buy that every.
You don't, you don't wanna.
Got it, um, so that location actually is, is almost dead on. To where it was shown in our landscaping plan and.
That is actually gonna show it out, alright, I let, take another look.
I'll have them put it back up, it was.
Yeah, that would help.
It was, it was almost dead on.
Is, can I ask a question about the wall?
Yes.
Is that the full length of the wall?
What do you mean? Is this accurate?
Yeah. No, does that defect accurately, but I think it was a hundred linear feet or something.
On the other side?
Um.
No, on this one.
So, the decision said a max of ninety linear feet, this is actually, this is twenty, and then the sign is ten, and then twenty.
So the wall will, in reality, extend further.
Well, this, this is showing the wall, this is, it would be twenty on each side.
Not that big.
It's not, it's not ninety linear feet.
But we want it to be ninety, right?
It said a max of ninety linear feet, so.
So, we're open for this. So.
Maybe ninety.
Oh, we're gonna get ninety. Uh, the idea was, and I, and, again, I'm not a, look at how I dress, I'm not an aesthetic person. Um, but the idea was to sort of match that wall to the other wall, and have it look like it's. Um, kind of balanced.
Yeah.
You know, so. It it looks a little stubby in the, in the rendering, so I would love to see the actual length of the wall. What it's supposed to be.
Ninety linear feet.
Nine, yeah.
So when you say stubby, do you mean?
I've never heard that.
Like it's a technical engineering.
Twenty-four meter.
Okay.
I don't wanna throw around.
Still not, though, I don't think it's right over my head, but. Thank you, I'll move on.
Yeah, we got all of it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I I don't know where to go after this. I'm gonna go back to five five twenty-two.
Okay.
The sign had granite and the side, the appearance we wanted was something granite, that looked New England, that welcomed you to Belling. I think, um, it looks too brown.
This one looks too brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think other, other board members may wanna chime in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I think, I like it with the blue behind it, I actually like the gray, to be honest with you, and the. Even with, yeah, from five twenty-two, even with the stone wall being the gray too.
Yes.
Because it meant, the blues be, I mean, I know we gotta adjust the blue back down a little bit, but to me, that, that's a. And, you know, the granite up the sides of the sign, I think that looks a lot better too, it's a more of a, you know, it's a, it's. So it's, it's like, the way I kinda trying to convey. Is that sign with those colors, with the wall that you have there, like that.
Yeah.
Like that, going along with his concern with the, with the stubbiness.
Yeah, yeah, that's, you got it, Phil, that's it.
Is it?
Yeah, I agree, then, but. Yeah.
Five twenty-two sign looks great.
This five twenty-two sign.
Yeah.
Okay, with the sides up the side.
Yeah, yeah.
With the blues, grays, the tones there, with the same wall that you have on, you know.
Yeah.
This here, only with the gray matching gray stuff.
Yeah.
Yes.
With the stubbiness concern, yeah. Uh, does that wall and the color match the wall on the other side?
So, so driving by today, I mean, it's definite, this is definitely light.
Yeah.
The one on Maple definitely has brown tones, but um it, the grout is very dark gray. So there's a lot of like the grout.
Okay.
And so, so it's a mix, it's definitely darker than this.
Okay, if there's any way to sort of mirror, the idea was to mirror the other side.
Yep.
So, in, in, in taking in what he just said. And then the other thing, while I think of it, and um, there was that historical marker there.
It's there, the trolley sign is there.
Yeah, it's all like.
Yeah, we can fit, yes.
Okay.
It stayed.
But I think the idea was to incorporate that.
Can you accent that some? Just with the trolley sign reference too.
Keep the guy walking the sidewalk too.
Yeah, that guy has to stay there.
Are you asking where the trolley sign is today? Um, it basically, it's basically right next to this sign.
Okay.
It's kind, it's a little crooked right now, but it's still there, and we can, we can put it back wherever you want.
Perfect.
Yeah, we can relocate it, fix it back up.
Okay, that'd be appreciated.
Um, were you thinking it was gonna be on this?
No, I thought, well, no, I, I remember saying those words, that it's incorporated into the sign, then I think that's a dumpy old broken sign. Um, so I thought it might be, cause it's a historical, some significance of some kind.
Uh, but we can make it stand out.
As long as it doesn't get in the way, you know, so. The problem of asking seven people their opinions, they tell you. And I apologize, the other people here are like, shut up.
I tend not to completely flip this upside down, but I went on Classic Signs website.
Yep.
And what was proposed to us at the last meeting is nearly identical to the sign of an apartment complex. Called Mill Three, if you go on their website, they have a gallery.
Okay.
You can look at it, and it, it seems to be their go-to recipe for signs.
Okay.
I think Bellingham deserves more than the sign to an apartment complex.
It looks like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Mill Three Apartments, it's, it's right on their website.
Okay.
And it's Mill Three Apartments, and it even has a little plaque underneath, it's nearly identical.
Okay.
So that kinda tells me maybe not a lot of thought was put into this, because it's totally something they've done before.
Okay.
Um.
Just getting here with this removing the pillars.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I don't wanna speak for Classic Signs, but, you know, we didn't start over, we just modified, but I will take a look.
So I, I can see what they're, what you might likely look at, and I have a little bit of concern with the stone. With the wall, is this a solid stone or is it a veneer?
It's gonna be, it was gonna be a veneer.
Okay, so, so veneer stone can be cheaper, it can be really nice. It goes back and forth with examples on their website, so I wouldn't mind a real picture, not a drawing.
Mm-hmm.
Of the stone that's gonna be used.
Okay.
Um, because Bellingham's a historic town, I think that the stone that you use can reflect the history with, you know, local stone. Like, and they make a lot of local, um, like New England fieldstone veneers that match, you know. Stone that you might find in the area, um, what I'm seeing online, I don't really love.
Okay, but we want it to match across.
Exactly, so I, I just have some concern that the stone used all around is a high-quality stone, because on their website, it. It goes back and forth, so if we could get real pictures of the stone.
Yep.
Instead of a concrete wall veneered is what that's gonna be, across the street, that's real, real stuff.
Okay.
Oh, that was a veneer.
Oh, sure, that's exactly what, that's where they got the color, you, I think it's a little rocky.
If you go right down the road, and you look at the Westerland, that is like a New England fieldstone veneer, that is, that is very nice.
Right.
There's good veneer, and then there's like stick-on veneer that is gonna fall off, um. So if we could get some regular pictures of the stone, because you can't really tell what, what it's gonna look like in real life.
And then what we would like to do is replicate what we do on the small sign, on the larger sign.
The matching.
The pylon.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'm a little bit confused about that, because last time we talked about them having their own identity, so we're okay with that.
But if we can sort of keep similar colors.
The color.
And they're in the line of similar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tasteful.
Dignified. So, so if we wanted to use the blue for our pylon. We would use them more.
Yes.
Dignified.
Yes.
Blue, okay.
Yes.
And then. Ideally, this. Swaps back to the grayish-blueish.
On the five twenty-two.
Right?
Five twenty-two.
Okay.
And a fieldstone, you're gonna do that wall more of a gray.
Yeah.
To match with the sides, you know.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um. I do have one more question on signage, doesn't have to do with these ones. Um, one of the decisions also noted that there was to be no signage on this corner here. What about address, like, just a two oh six? Does that count as signage if it's not a logo or a tenant sign?
How big are you?
You talking letters?
Just, yeah, just numbers, just in the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about closer to the driveway?
Uh, down here?
Up there, away from the sign, on the corner.
Yeah, he's, she's talking down the far side, the other entryway.
On both side, like both entrance, by the e- entrance she was talking about.
Ide- ideally, I would locate it.
She doesn't wanna do that, she wants something else.
I would put it on this corner, two oh six, two oh six, and then also over the main entrance down on Maple.
Thinking it helps, it's, you know, location if you're driving.
It's tastefully done.
It would just be white.
Smashing.
White to the sign.
Oh, I don't know if you want that there. I mean, think about that, in the middle of the sign.
Above the sign.
No, no, on the building.
On the bill, building above the sign.
Yes.
I think you'd wanna see that, think of how huge that building is, and where would it be? I, I mean, you thought, you look, think, think about the placement of that.
Yeah.
Can you show us?
Yeah.
Would you mind?
Yes, I, I didn't bring with me today.
It's fine, it, it's gonna be on that sign anyway, correct?
It's gonna be on the pylon, like, that's down.
On the entryway.
So the, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Another, well.
And I didn't know if it was gonna be required by, like, department anyways. Um, because it's putting it, you know, vinyl on the, on the glass or the entryway. Our, our elevation is so much lower, you won't see it from the street.
I operate.
Could you do another sign, that sign going down, or no, is that too much?
That's what I think we may wanna. Unless we have something otherwise from the fire department, leave the two oh six on the chemistry. And don't put any numbers on the corner.
So not, but, so not this facade?
Yeah, what do you think of that?
Maybe not, I'm not understanding you, nothing on the building facade?
But putting.
Give it all the traffic coming out of Franklin right to that corner, that's what she's.
That's where the entry.
Yeah, and they gotta take a right, so.
You can either take a right onto Maple or drive by.
Yes, if you take a right onto Maple, you're not going in the building.
Yeah, you can't get in the building, your truck, truck deliveries we're talking.
Deliveries for me, honey.
Correct, but our, but our, um, our employee entrance or our office entrance would be down here.
Yeah. Down in the corner, I wouldn't mind, down, down the end of Maple Street, where she's talking.
I think you need to see it, cause you're gonna have a huge building and then just a number.
Yeah, just a, all little letters.
See that, yeah, I don't know.
I put, I'm kind of leaning against having the two oh six above. You wanna.
Bellingham sign.
Oh, I put them on both entrances, but I wouldn't, right above, welcome to Bellingham with a two oh six number right above it, and. I mean, you can come and show it to us, but.
Yeah, maybe you can do that, that would be.
It's, yeah.
We don't want it to draw our attention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Quick question, I apologize, I might have missed this, I stepped outside, why are we not just putting it on the sign?
It is, you're right, it's on the sign here.
One, so.
Right.
If you put it on the sign, where we can see it right from the main entrance, that's good, it doesn't need to be past all over the building, it's just easy as long as it's on the sign.
That's exactly where this is, yeah.
Perfect, for us, that's good. If that helps you out.
So you, okay, that, that.
Yeah, the sign's gonna be right in the front of the corner, correct?
So, no, the pylon is down.
Okay.
By the entrance.
What you gonna, by the entrance?
For the trucks.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, I'm taking two answers, the numbers at the two, with the truck, that's all I'm thinking.
That's where I'm at.
A truck is saying, you know, where, where is the, you know.
My one's both entrances.
That sign too.
Yeah, instead of up high in the building, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, this is.
Down, oh, great. Yeah, nicely done, right here. Two signs here.
I'm serious too.
Right.
I know.
So two signs like that, they don't, basically, that's, it might have been on the building, yeah, yeah.
Although, is that. They'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out, okay.
We're, we're coming back.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
We can don't figure it out, will we?
You have the input from the chief.
Um, well, who wants to know if I can put it on your sign?
I, I would just put it in the sign, that's what I'm trying to say.
I said, well, this is the most, the big sign.
Corner, right, for us, it's the easiest thing to do, is put it on the signs.
Did you see the other signs that, that are gonna be by the entrances behind her?
No.
But.
Chief, I'm running through the building.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be massive, I can show you a couple different.[1584.94] Yeah, just like a little.
I'll go with that, that's fine, if you wanna do that on both ends, that's fine. But you've got, just gotta remember, we have usually companies coming in, where they're coming in from one side, they need to do that, exactly. That's why Bill's mindset is, we put it on the side, but if you don't want that, then do we change? If we have to, we we just can't, we can't assume it's gonna be our personal responding all the time.
Good point, thank you.
I think a uh, a spotlight would be really nice on the welcome to Bellingham sign.
You light it up?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have any provisions for power out there.
Okay.
Right now. And I I don't think illuminated was a was a condition. We couldn't, I mean, they do have like solar ones.
Yeah.
Which which we can look at, but.
When would you like to come back?
Well, I really wanna, we're gonna power wash the building um, April first, so I really wanna try and. Nail down the the building colors.
Okay, can we? Can we screw during the elections?
Yeah. Absolutely.
All right.
I'm gonna say, I mean, first, first, first on the agenda. If that's okay.
Yeah, let's do that, I wa- I wanna do that, but. Yeah.
Okay. So new colors for next week. Uh, ne- not next week. The eleventh, next meeting. Revised signage.
Amy, do you want the, the colors and the scripts?
Yeah, you can keep.
Send colors before me and I think the floor we can.
Yeah, well, I can drop, yeah, I can drop them off, do you wanna keep this one too? Sure, okay.
Sure, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
If nothing, I'm glad it.
You learn something every day, thank you so much for your patience.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
So appreciate it.
Sorry, Dom. So we have. Maple Street or the A and R?
Maple Street.
Okay.
We don't have any color sign.
Not sure, that's the color of the one. I'm kidding.
What are we doing?
Sisters, Tarso three. First solo.
Welcome, why don't you bring us up to speed? All right. Good evening, for the record, John Cusick with Bowler, I'm filling in for Greg who's away on uh, way on vacation. I think presentation should be very uh, very straightforward. Uh, when Greg presented to Alaska, I went through the project and showed everything on the south side, obviously the north side is completely uh, completely done. And when um, the discussions were, I think there were a couple of items that um, that the board wanted. Number one, they wanted to get through conservation, make sure there weren't any issues of conservation commission. Um, they wanted to make sure that we got through um, fire, make sure they were comfortable with what was uh, presented uh, on on that plan. So. And we've been going through Franklin, there were. So with. Conservation, um, we're, we're done, we had a meeting last night just to review the conditions of approval. Frank, the only issue was, was some cut and paste that wasn't the, the right cut and paste that we're cleaning up that way, we're gonna go back on the eleventh. Get that cleaned up and fully, fully buttoned up, there's no plan changes or that stuff, just. A little bit. Based on some comments we heard, uh, we need some changes to. Fire protection on the site, I submitted that, those plans to the board, coordinated that with the chief. Want you to show where we're bringing the water line in, you know, where we're putting hydrants and all that. Um, I believe everything is acceptable, I still wanna speak for.
No, that is correct.
So we've gone through that and. That's, that's really, that's really it, I don't think there's anything more on, on our end, those are the items that we leave it together.
Is there any changes, substantive changes to the plan?
Not at all, no, not at all, um, some of the, she's going through Franklin, there were little changes like adding four pumblers on here, things like that on the Bellingham side. No changes, short of just bringing the water line. And and having that reviewed by the, by chief.
And this board did a good job of when we issued, issued the north's approval and put those conditions on. I think it was generally understood and accepted that those conditions would also be applied to and adopted when we got the parcel three. I'll just say we're before the ZVA next week. On the uh, issue of the used variance and then we'll be wrapping up uh, with the conservation vote.
Eleven, whoever the next one is. That's where we're at. End of the, end of the line on our end with anything that um, we can provide on our end.
Well, I haven't been on the Franklin. Site, any surprises I think you should talk about?
No surprises, everything's went through uh, smoothly, we were there uh, earlier this week. And our expectation is when we're back in about. We should, they should be closing the public hearing and and doing the vote. The last issue that we have there is just fire department sign off. And uh, Mr. Cheever was a civil engineer, is Deputy Fire Chief in the City of Riverdale, was working with your chief. Is currently working with the chief and deputy chief over in Franklin, just to make sure they're satisfied as well. Uh, once we have that, we'll be all, we'll be all. You've asked me, uh, they, uh, they may have Mr. Helen sending Mr. Frayne a letter, or they may send a letter to you. To say with respect, any potential. Uh, idea in the future, parcel two would ever come, ever come up, that they, they're not looking at ball fields or anything like that, but they understand. That that's not something that's on the table, it's uh, it's it's awful, we've confirmed, we've confirmed all that. So that is effectively dropped.
So that'll be part of this decision as well, that that access would be, that two is for solar only?
Yes, you have a, you have a condition in the north.
Yeah.
Together with your counsel, that made it very clear. That in the event anybody ever wanted to do anything with parcel two. It would require coming before the board, petitioning and getting approval. And uh, you would ask that, that be expressly stated, and we agreed to that, and that was incorporated into the decision, and we expect that to be included as well in the south. But I could tell you what I've related to Franklin. I've related to Mr. Helen, I've related directly to the town planner, and I did it before the planning board as well. That parcel two's done. Parcel two is, we've agreed with Franklin, we were not going to expand the solar array out to parcel two. That's what was within our control, that's what we could go and do, that's what we've agreed to. Everything else is done.
Sure, correctly remembered.
Parcel two. Well, we'll release that back, parcel one. You drive through parcel one to get to two. You drive through two to get to three. Correct?
Correct.
And conversely, you drive from three. Through two to get to one. Nothing is being developed in parcel two.
Correct.
Parcel two is strictly limited to access to and from. Parcel one and parcel three.
Correct, par- parcel two is essentially an open space parcel, there there's nothing.
If, if, if we were to put something on a decision. That remains open space in perpetuity. Are you comfortable with that?
I didn't speak to Mr. Server, but we, we told, we probably gotta take care of that in Franklin.
Okay.
So I don't think the, the work of condition. Property, but we have expressly stated to Franklin. When we did it, when we approved in North, and I did it again on Monday night. Parcel two is not gonna be developed, the solar array is not gonna be expanded off of parcel two, and we stand by that. And I put that in writing, if they wanna condition their decision on that, consult them, that's okay, and I expect that they're gonna go with that.
Okay, we'll probably have to look at our condition, cuz I know when we were looking for the northern parcel. Condition like we talked about, and we expressly did that. The mechanism we did that, we wanna make sure that the south parcel did also condition that, and we might have. The language may need to be tweaked in there, but the spirit of it is that you're not developing it. You, that we're permitting a solar project here. We're not, it's not recreation, it's not any of that other stuff, so that sounds like we're on the same page.
We are on the same page. And I think you'll be happy, I think the language that you have in the north. They're literally gonna be able to transpose it directly to the south. We'll double check it, we'll go through the language together, we'll make sure.
Okay. What's the next step?
I think you can motion, but probably have a draft decision. Drafted for. If you feel that, if you, I mean, I don't know what more we can discuss.
Reaction. My reaction was more to the eleven.
Well, we, you can discuss at the eleventh, but then probably have a final version if you're not comfortable for the twenty fifth, with whatever, you go back and forth if you're not comfortable. I mean, it's because.
The eleventh is already. Pretty robust, we're gonna apply like. What I would like. What, what I would like to do. Is, what do we have on the twenty fifth right now, what are you looking at?
We have our. Petition.
Yes, which will be long.
And we have a warehouse of building. We have another new application for Maple Street. For building.
Mr. I, I don't think going through the decision is gonna take, you know, much time because of what we did before. And and the, and and the previous uh, decision is pretty much gonna.
I'd like to turn to Brian. What is, what if we were to close a public hearing? And have a draft decision.
We've never done that.
But don't we have to close a public hearing before?
So I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I would suggest that we don't close it, just in case.
Right.
New information, there's still. All that, but I think we can, I'm okay. With them coming back to the eleventh if it works. With, with a decision for us to talk about, I think that's. If the eleventh is, it's, I mean, it's just the nature of the beast that we have long.
Okay, I'm just looking at the mechanics of this. So are you saying the drafted decision?
Yeah, drafted.
So are we allowed to um? Close a public hearing? Involve in the decision to say no? It's legally, you have to close a public hearing. You're involved in the session. I was just trying to use any of the best mechanism to get that done.
I think that works. We'll close it, we can discuss the, or just. Discuss the decision if we need more information, can we help you, or updates from Franklin? And then we close it, and we'll.
I think it's what works, I think we did, la- last time, I think we did kind of the equivalent, that we would close it tonight. The draft decision, and then we discussed the draft decision after the hearing was closed, attorney signed, was okay with that. But I think doing it the other way is fine as well.
Okay.
I think either way, we'll be ready to go and wrap this up.
We're gonna entertain a motion.
For the other?
What?
For the other?
Yes.
Okay.
To write a motion, to write a draft decision.
For the eleven, yeah.
Second. Yeah, any discussion? Hold on, no, cuz public venue is still open. Chief. Any concerns? Okay. And then, uh, based on what I'm hearing, that decision will replicate our previous decision. Any other discussion? Be along next, sir. I will get you um. I'm sorry, but you may, you may be last. We're trying to get that done right away.
You wanna have the motion being that you're drafting a decision for April eleventh along with continuing the hearing?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's what I heard, okay, we're good.
What's sort of an extension of the uh, uh, decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll call for the other.
Then aside.
Folks and passengers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Luke, come on up.
So um. I think we're here to talk a little bit about uh. My A and R current for Blackstone Street. With my understanding, the board, not a, oh, by the way, I'm wearing my hat tonight because. All the publicity. Uh, you know, on social media, and I felt, I felt obligated to. You know, be a hat person, because I'm a hat person. All of a sudden, though, we have an anti-hat.
Well, we'll probably hear about that tomorrow.
It's okay, probably the mildest comments I've had in a while. But I, I, from what I understand, he says we received a legal opinion of some sort.
And we've received it, it was from the town.
And I haven't uh. Received a copy of it, so I don't know if you know.
I did not give it to him cuz it said confidential.
Okay.
So I don't release anything that says confidential unless I'm told to release it. Cuz it was to the board. So.
We've heard from.
It was a new draft.
We've heard from. The apartments in ten, right?
We've heard from them, what you mean by with?
I I had an opportunity to speak with.
Some of them waited.
Some of them waited. Okay, it is not called, it's out of care assessment.
Yes. Yes.
What, what does it qualify for?
Unapproved run.
We're not saying it.
I'm sorry, wait, go ahead.
So, as if you recall at the last meeting.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for you to say that it's an approved road.
That, that was my, my run from a.
Okay. What I'm asking the board to take, make a determination that it's a way, that it was a way, or it is a way, that was in existence. At the time the town adopted the subdivision control law, which means. Um, it's a way that existed not only on plan, but also existed on the ground. And I think. The evidence shows that it is. A way that existed on the ground in nineteen fifty-three when the subdivision control. That's the only decision I'm asking the board to make. Uh, asking the board to make any decision relative to the A and R plan, because we all understand that. The standard of the roadway as it exists today is not up to the town's standards of construction. We all agree on that. No question about it. So the question then becomes. Under the subdivision control law. How do we? Go about constructing the roadway up to the town's standards? And with the planning board applying the movement regulations for the max makes sense practical, given this. Given the parameters of the roadway, the width. And uh, so and so forth, so. I'm only here. Tonight. To get that determination one way or another, that it is a way. That's in existence at the, at the time the subdivision control law became in existence. If we, if that decision is made, then we would then work on the framework. Of how to design the road in accordance with your construction standards. And have it reviewed by your peer reviewer. And then. Present. The A and R plan and the construction standards of planning profile. To be endorsed together. That's really kind of the process it's supposed to take.
Or my interpretation.
So we, we have an application though, right, so there's an application.
You have the application, and then you guys chose to extend that, and we have a letter till. April twelfth, so, so you can still obviously talk about this and continue it till the eleventh if you so choose. Um, so we have an extension of that.
Yeah, and I can continue, I can give another extension.
Right, right, right.
In other words, there's no deadlines here, there's no um. Attempt here to try and squeeze the board into a time constraint. But it is important for this process for the planning board to make this determination. To get to the next step.
Okay. I don't believe it provides adequate statistics to the.
That's, we're not making that determination now. You're right, it doesn't.
That's my opinion.
You, you're right, but again, very much. Breaking it to two parts, the first part is. Is it a way in an existence at the time the subdivision control law became effective in the town building? That's the only decision you have to make. Is it a way? In existence in nineteen fifty-three? I have evident.
I, I understand.
To show that, that's the only decision I want you to, I'm asking the board to make, it's kind of, it's.
Whether it is now.
So you're saying it's not right now?
It's not, it, it's not entitled, it's not entitled to endorsement right now.
But it wouldn't qualify as, as the road now, because it's not the right grading, it's not the.
Correct.
It's not the right widths, it doesn't qualify for that stuff currently to that.
Correct.
You're agreeing to that.
I'm agreeing to that, yeah, no question about that.
Okay.
What are you saying?
So that, okay.
But at the time of us.
But in nineteen fifty-three, it was a way.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the, I'm just. The law is the law, I mean, the law is split into two parts, like if you've read my material. There's two decisions to make, the first decision, is it a way? That's exactly. And by definition, if that's the case, it's not a subdivision. But how you construct the roadway is up to the board's discretion.
So can I, can I ask you a question?
And that's why it was that you either approve it or deny it, that's basically, right.
It's not the rest of it.
Right.
What, so I appreciate that you, you're looking for some kind of. Modified arrangement and, and agreement with the board. The, the petition before us is an A and R. Um, but you're, that, I get, hold on, I just wanna ask you a question. The, what would give the board? The discretion or the authority to render a decision like that? Up in an A and R. Application, cuz my, my understanding is. It's frontage and, and access. It's frontage and and access. So what you're looking for the board to do is to make a legal determination, no? So help me with that.
So, the only reason we filed the A and R is because I wouldn't be able to get on the agenda for a discussion of this matter. Unless I file the A and R, that's what I.
That was the mechanism you used.
That was the premise behind it, because I was ready to come and discuss this months and months ago, and so, so. I could have easily writ, you know, presented a letter. Asking for the board's determination on those status of this right away in nineteen fifty-three.
What what is that, though, what what petition is that?
It's, it's really not a petition, it's a, it's a determination that the board makes, it's um. If you have my thing, I'll read it. It's pretty clear, I mean.
So you say we have the authority to render that decision?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I I, the board has the, has the right to make the determination of whether or not Blackstone Street in this location. Was in existence in nineteen fifty-three. That's all I want, that's all I'm asking you to do.
Can can that question proceed? If there's no question that the property doesn't comply or would reach the the qualification for an A and R. Can that question just go on, and we we deny the A and R, but we look at. Because I feel like we have to deny the A and R, because nobody can test that there is an adequate access.
It's two separate, two separate decisions.
Two separate actions.
Two separate actions, first you make the decision. Because if if you determine that it's not a way in existence, then I have to go subdivision control. If it's a way in existence, then it's not a subdivision by definition on the, the, the subdivision control law, it's an A and R plan. So, it's how the, it's how the A and R plan gets to. Uh modified status with the access, now, let's reverse it a little. It it's a right of way, I have the right, I can go in there tomorrow. And and pave that roadway, make it suitable base. Not comply with any regulations of the town.
Yep.
And come back with the A and R plan, you'd have to sign it, correct, agree?
Yep.
So. That would mean that the way is already there. All all I'm trying to do is not do that. Because that's not in anyone's best interest, because ultimately, that street. Again, will be up for adoption as a public way once it's done according to the construction standards of the planning board. So so the first step in the process is, again. Is it a way in existence in nineteen fifty-three when the subdivision control law came into play?
Okay.
If the answer to that question is yes, then we talk about the A and R plan and the adequate access needed for that A and R plan. At a subsequent. I mean, it could be, it could be with a, it could be, uh the way I've done in other communities is. You have a. A plan and a profile done exactly the way you would do it in a subdivision, but it's not a subdivision, you have the road, the profile, the utilities. The drainage, all these things that would be required of a subdivision roadway. Within A and R plan.
Can I ask a question? You earlier, you you give us the extension, Mr. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a pretty full agendas. On the eleventh and the twenty fifth.
Well, the twenty fifth, I think that was pretty over.
Then we put a couple of things on there now.
We have a new hearing, and then we have the other two or three.
You are on the agenda for the fourteenth of May.
So, yeah, so let's, let's play this out, so if the board were to give. Well, that it's a way in existence, then I'll extend it, we're going to need time to prepare the plans and do everything, so. Perfectly happy extending this out.
We'd like to extend it out to um. Continue this public hearing.
It's not a hearing.
Continue this until uh May fourteenth.
Get another extension until May.
Yes, so you can get a little more information from all the parties involved. I know, uh chief, you would need more information, correct?
Yeah, I haven't seen any plans, I don't know what you think about it.
Okay.
We haven't done any.
I I I understand.
Now, now. Would it be possible for the board to take the first step here, do you feel comfortable taking this?
No, I I I think I'd rather wait till the.
Can I, can I just, just a procedural question, is it? Why is it? If we say it's a a way in existence.
Yep.
And then deny the A and R, right, because it still doesn't have.
Yeah, right, but then, but then I'd refile it, I mean, yeah, you could do that, you could do that, you could make a determination that it's a way in existence.
Yeah.
And then I would, then we, I could refile the A and R plan and go through the same dynamics that we're going through now, which is okay. How do we construct the roadway, what are the parameters now? Chief Miller made, we call that, I did this in Hawkinson. We had a, they had a a different process where you you make a petition to construct a private way. Which is, this is what that is, so it was a, they they organized it as a petition. So in that petition, we outlined, here's the A and R plan. And these are the waivers that we want, that we can't comply with under your subdivision control law, because. The right of way isn't fifty feet wide, so you can't do sidewalks, grass, or pavement with all of that stuff. So there's certain things that we'd go through, and we'd list the waivers that we can't comply with with your subdivision regulations. But all your other standards would apply, the gravel, the drainage, the piping, the utilities, all those things would apply. And we would show that on a plan. That, just like the subdivision, but not a subdivision, my profile that for construction of the roadway, and that would be. In tandem with the A and R plan, so it'd be like a, maybe a two sheet A and R. One showing the lot layout, one showing the construction of the road. So, it's a, you could do that, you could deny, you could determine it's a way. You could tie it, but there's no reason to deny it if I'm extending it, and we. I go and I prepare the plans, I come back on May fourteenth. Give you the, the the road and profile, we go to peer review and do it that way, and then. We keep continuing it out.
It it, it's probably common, it's just, it's strange to me, uh it, but that, but I'm sure it's common.
Yeah, most planning board, I mean, you don't understand, don't read them, I'm not saying you don't, but. You got to read the right feeling.
Yeah, this is what I'd like to do, as I said earlier. Um, I don't know if you're, we have a new town plan coming out.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think we need that help too.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, without a secretary also.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. That's why I'd like to have him express his opinion on this.
Okay.
On day fourteen, so I'd like to continue this decision.
Yeah.
To make fourteen.
Yeah.
So we have our town planner and get his opinion and his expertise. Okay, that's my my feeling. I don't want to make a rash decision.
Okay.
That you know impacts either the applicant or the.
Okay.
So we have a town planner coming on board, I believe his start date is early May. So I I would think we've been very careful to have um. Your project on the fourteenth.
What do we have, we have process.
We have process, I mean, you're going to be here.
So we'll do well.
I was getting used to coming to every meeting.
We're going to give you a break for a month.
It's so cynical.
Read between, read between what I'm going to say. You can go home.
I enjoy.
Be at home on the twenty fifth. You can enjoy the Patriots' trip.
Yeah, yeah, oh, that's true.
I will, I will be able to do that, okay? Not of the board, all right, so you.
I don't think it's, no. No, no, I I think there's rules, but I don't.
We need, we need to get.
I mean, it's, I've never cared that. Well, it could be, and that's why we don't release it.
So let's be careful with that, let's ask Amy about um, yeah, Questle.
So just so you know, Amy Questle was the town councilor in one of the other towns. That we've done, you know, we've had.
Okay.
So, it's just one of, and kind of, I almost learned about it from them, because Amy brought it up, and so. All of these matters have gone to town council in other communities, so Hawkinson in particular, you know, it's just the way. These are unique situations, when you have land that nobody's, that people have forgotten about. And I come along and refresh their memories.
Do a lot of that, don't you?
If you, if you don't mind asking town council if it should be released, and then if it.
I'll ask, but I. When things say confidential, I I just. We literally don't, because there's case law within those documents of what they're advising you.
There's.
It's, it's eternal.
It is, it really.
I get it, but there's, there's rules that we can't hold on to that.
Like cases closed.
We're not in executive session, we're not talking about pending litigation.
It's.
The document.
We're not looking to create a, an adversarial. It's always helpful if you have my attorney talk to your attorney and, you know.
Yeah, I can ask.
For a smoother transition, it helps you folks.
I can ask.
Feel more comfortable about the decision you're going to make.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, you can ask.
We'll, we'll try to bring you to point you as soon as we can, it's out of there.
I love reading this stuff.
Okay, what do we have in writing right now as far as an extension on this?
We have April twelve, the Friday.
So we need to extend it to um.
May fifteen.
And you're agreeing to that? Excellent, excellent. I heard yes, that's great.
Very good.
I'll wear this one out next time. We're going to all wear half, thank you.
Yes.
But that guy uh.
I I don't, I forgot his name.
I'll find it.
Last thing, motion nineteen is minutes.
Thank you.
Let's hold up this, just two minutes on.
Sure. Sure.
There is at least one.
The minutes?
Seven minutes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Then why don't we just fold them, and if you, if you. Okay, that's fine, that's, that's, so, yeah, that's fine, no, that's, so, was everything?
Sharpeno voted? Yeah, but he can talk about that one, but, but.
So, let's do this, when I, I mean, I I think typically what we do with other boards, if you have any questions with the minutes, send it to me. Before the, before the meeting, and that way I can get those fixed.
What was your question about the minutes?
There was the name.
Okay, so can we approve them with amendments, and then you send them to me, and then that way Tina, I can just let her know and get them posted, if it's two minor things, a name and a.
Yeah, which is a name.
That's fine. The covenant, that's fine, so.
That was my only issue.
That's fine, if those, that's the only two things, that's minor, I'd I'd rather get them up on. Minor too, I mean.
So do we vote to approve it?
Our hundred K a motion. To approve the minutes from the last meeting, based on.
With the amendments.
With the amendments, out of one or two changes, it could be the same.
And moved.
Correct?
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
Yes, next second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Go on.
Go on.
Nick I.
Okay, motion, Brian.
So moved.
To adjourn.
Second. Done.
All right, still on.
Nick I.